We're just waiting for, okay. So this is the zoning board of appeals and today is the 13th of June. I'm Janice Tatarka. I am joined by other, excuse me, I am joined by other board members Joan Cromwell, Joseph Mahoney, Marilyn Vega Torres, and Arthur Arseneault, and you all know John De Priest and Hector Velez. As I said earlier, we're going to be taking things slightly out of order because we're waiting for our fifth, our additional member, our sixth member Hugo. We need four people to vote and there's a couple of cases where people weren't here, so we wouldn't have enough people to vote until he gets here. So the first, we're going to take very, one thing very slowly out of order. 2023-02-80 Park Street, Chayson Falls, has asked to be moved to the July meeting. Do I have a move to, agree to move that to a July meeting, a motion? Joe, a second. Marilyn, all in favor? Aye. No? Okay. Okay, we have three yeses and an abstention. But, just moving.
It's just administrative.
Oh, okay, alright.
Okay, alright, fine. The first case in front of us is 2022-36-6971 Spencer Ave. Zepage Development for a special permit and variance seeking approval for the conversion of an existing residential structure from one-family to two-family structure which does not meet the minimum requirement for open space and off-street parking. One thing I want to remind people is variances, a number of the cases today will deal with the variances. Variances require you to meet four very specific criteria. If you do not meet all four of the criteria, we are unable to grant that variance. So it's not an option. We have significantly amount, significantly more leeway with special permits.
There's a list of criteria on the table.
Oh, the list of criteria is on the table for those who want to see that. So FYI, just want people to know that. A number of, I've noticed that this month we have a number that require both a special permit and a variance.
If I may, Madam Chairman, women, members of the board, Anthony Rossi, on behalf of petitioner, good evening. I do have the petitioner here, Mrs. Zepage. I also have.
Excuse me, if you take the phone off.
It's easier, yeah.
I appreciate it. I do have Rick Salvo here from Engineering Alliance, who's a civil engineer, and I do have David Barsky, who's the architect of record. And John, I do believe you do have the plans before you. I'll have David talk a little bit about the plan, but in brief history, my client, Mrs. Zepage, owns the structure next to it. He tore down the structure a few years back and built a brand-new building, also a large multi-unit building to the left of it. Adjoining to this parcel to the right is a single-family dwelling. He did get a letter from the abutter who was very excited about his project and did review the plans. I believe that was filed as part of the record at the last hearing on that. So he did talk to Director Butters, which is himself and the other abutter. When we did go to the planning board, one of the planning board's concerns was that the abutter may have not been aware of what was going on, and at that point in time, we did not have contact with the abutter. But since then, we did talk to the abutter and he was very happy with the plans and he was familiar with Mrs. Zepage because he was a neighbor on the other property. And I also would know, one of the concerns they had, just so I can bring up, is they actually wanted more multiple bedrooms, two, three, four-bedroom units. And this project here is consisting of 11 one-bedrooms and four two-bedrooms. By right, it would have been a 12-unit project, but then it would have only been two affordable units. In working with the city and with John De Priest and the planning department, those other additional three units, two of those will now be affordable units rather than one unit to make up for the additional units that are being requested. And I can have David talk a little bit about the site plan. And as far as the system now that's being built, we do have now eight rows of a cul-de-sac system, and you can see it on the, I believe, John, if you go to the next slide. This area here is all cul-de-sac system to now address drainage that's currently not on-site whatsoever. So it will be a huge improvement for stormwater. Nothing whatsoever is coming off the property, will stay on the property, which currently everything, of course, disperses off the property. The building has two stairwells, does not have an elevator because it's only a three-story building, has landscaping on this side around the whole frontage and an area on this front corner here. And I will note that one of the topics was, as far as snow removal is concerned, and that could be a condition if this was approved, that all the snow can be pushed in that area in the wintertime, and whatever is left over, if it's taking a parking spot away, you'd have to remove it off-site. My client manages his property, just as he does next door, he would gladly remove the snow. He's had no issues in the past and he expects to do so. There'll be 15 parking spaces for essentially 11 one-bedroom units and four two-bedroom units. Of the mixture, you are going to have a mixture of two bedroom, one-bedroom units that are going to go to four of them, four affordable units to the city, rather than two.
How many parking spaces would they require?
Thirty.
Thirty?
I believe it's thirty. Thirty and fifteen are provided, basically one per dwelling unit. The only two violations, I believe, were the lot size, which would trigger 12 units rather than 15, and which goes back with the per square footage per unit, which is 950 and it's 833. It goes hand-in-hand with the lot size, they're pretty much the same. Once you trigger one violation, yeah, you trigger that violation at the same time. Everything else is code compliant, setbacks, front yard setbacks, side yard setbacks, rear yard setbacks, everything else is compliant. And David can talk about the elevations and the view of the building, and a little bit about my client's history. He did a beautiful building next door, he maintains it, he built it a few years back. I think the city's all aware that he does a nice product and the neighbors were excited about what he's doing here because they seen how he is, he's not like one of those typical absentee landlords. He actually runs his property, manages his property, and beautifies his property. And if I may, I can have David just talk a little bit about the structure itself and the plan.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is David Barsky, I'm the architect of record for this project. Can we go back to the, I mean, so we know this is a 15-unit project, 15 parking spaces, that's the site plan. I'm not sure exactly what you need, want me to talk about. Probably best for me to answer questions if you have.
Do you have any questions of the architect?
This project's been on the board the last meeting, so.
Any questions at this point of the architect? No? Okay.
If I may, I'll take it back. Thank you. I do want to know one thing too. One of the, one of the biggest issues with this property is that it's actually, all the property is in a flood zone.
Say that, a flood zone?
It's all in a flood zone. So the whole property had to be redesigned due to topography, so you can have no mechanicals, no basement, nothing below grade, and had to go above the flood plain. So the whole property had to be redesigned because it is in a flood zone.
Okay.
And I'll gladly answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions, so shall I open it to public? We're ready to open it up? You're not voting on this, okay. So I stick on the side. Is there, this is a public hearing. We have already heard from the planning board on this, John, correct?
Correct. The planning board recommended approval with standard conditions, design review, a lighting plan, no rental lease or sublease of less than 12 months, tenants of the building ineligible to participate in the city's resident sticker parking program, and an opaque fence along the Westley Lot Line.
Okay. This, so why it's important to know if it's gone to the planning board is that we have the opportunity to vote on this tonight. So, because usually we have to send the planning board, but they've already voted on this. So this is a public hearing, this will be your only opportunity, unless, well, this may be your only opportunity to speak on this. So is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? If you do, please come forward. Okay, there being none, I am closing the public participation portion of this hearing. Mr. Rossi, would you like to go through the conditions of the variance for us?
Yes.
So, one by one. The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape or topography of each, of such land or structure, and especially affecting such land or structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it is located.
This is pretty simple because it's similar to what we did on the adjoining property. Because the property is entirely in a flood zone, the whole entire topography has to change in order to be compliant with flood zone requirements as far as mechanicals and structure whatsoever. So the property, to meet the setbacks and elevations and height, had to be redesigned in order to make flood zone requirements to have residential housing on the property.
But it's consistent with the zoning?
Correct.
Yes?
Yes.
Two. The literal enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship, financial or otherwise, to the petitioner or applicant.
Correct. So the hardship, not just financial, but if you, if you didn't make it compliant, then you'd actually have to bring soil grade up in shape, which is not consistent to what's actually in the neighborhood. But the financial cost to do pylons to go above the grade would be far substantial than a normal project that was not in a flood zone.
Joan? Desirable relief may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
The relief would not be detrimental to the public good, even to the neighborhood as a whole, because it's actually consistent to what was built in surrounding properties in the flood zone. In fact, my client owns the adjoining property and he pretty much designed the building in the same shape, so it's not detrimental to the neighborhood or that, because that's actually what was built and other projects to be compliant in the flood zone.
And it's providing affordable housing additionally.
Correct. Two, it would, by right, it would have been two. By doing the 15 units, he's actually adding additional units, so it's four out of 15 at the affordable housing requirement.
Ladies and gentlemen? Yes. Desirable relief may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Absolutely, because it's a multi-family district. It allows multi-families in the area. It's not going against what's actually been approved, have been allowed or built on Spencer Ave. As you know, there's many large projects on Spencer Ave, including but unlimited to the adjoining property beside it. So the relief that's being granted normally is not detrimental, it's actually an improvement and it'll also offer additional affordable housing units that's well-needed in the city.
Okay, so you've met all the criteria, that's fine. That being said, so we've met the variance criteria, do we have an interest in addressing this today? John, does the plan, what is the planning department's recommendation on this?
The planning department's recommendation is approval. This is granting more affordable housing than would be required under the zoning ordinance. And as the council pointed out, it does not substantially derogate from the intent of the zoning. And we recommend the conditions that were listed previously.
Okay. Do we have a motion on this? Marilyn?
I just want to ask a quick question regarding the flooding issue. So that's been reviewed and approved?
It has, it has gone to the conservation commission and they received the permit from the conservation commission.
And the owner is going to manage, continue to manage the property?
Yes.
Okay.
Just as he's done it with the adjoining property.
Okay, and the last question regarding the parking, since there's 15 spaces?
Yes.
Are they going to be assigned to each unit?
Yes.
Okay. So each unit will have a parking?
Each unit will have a parking space, correct.
Okay, okay.
Okay, you want to make the motion?
Sorry, I just, sorry if you've already mentioned, this is rental, is it correct?
Correct.
Marilyn, you want to make the question?
I'll make a motion to approve case number 2022-36-6971 Spencer Avenue, Zepage Development for a special permit and variance seeking approval to demolish the existing two-family structure and for the construction of a 15 dwelling unit structure with the standard conditions.
The conditions as articulated?
Yes.
Do you have a second? Joe, all in favor? Thank you. Motion is carried. You know the timing, he's got to write it up, blah, 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 blah.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
Thank you. We're going to be skipping to 2023-07, which is, so I'm going to just make sure we put you off that, 4345 Blossom Street, for 40, this 43 Blossom Street Development for a special permit and variance seeking approval to renovate the existing four-family structure containing a total of 12 bedrooms before the reconfiguration of space, including a third-floor addition, in order to establish a six-dwelling unit structure containing a total of 12 bedrooms, which does not meet the minimum requirements for front yard setback, off-street parking, spaces, lot size, and side yard setback. This is the first time we'll be hearing this, so we will not be voting on this. This will instead go to the planning board on June 27th, and we'll come back here on July 11th.
Thank you. Again, Madam Chairman, women, members of the board, Anthony Rossi, on behalf of the petitioner. I just want to make sure, we do have five members that are kept to review. Okay, good. I do have the architect of record from Council of Design, and I do have the petitioner here.
There's no one who has an issue with voting on this, correct? We're all five of us that work on that. Okay, available?
John, do you have that on, on digital by any chance? I'm going to go through a brief synopsis and the architect can talk more in detail. I know this is just the initial hearing, so I'm just going to do a brief overview and not go into terrible detail because we're going to be going to the planning department. But initially, this was a four-unit project. The building caught fire, my clients acquired the building. Essentially, there, we worked with the city regarding design, development with the planning department to now do six units. The bedroom count will not change, it just will be separated to six units. The height of the building will actually be reduced to what it currently is today. It's just going to be more economically designed and more efficient to what's actually being needed out there for a rental project. And the actual aesthetics of the exterior of the building, of course, the building's going to be a brand-new building because it was, it had a fire on it. And it's going to be now sprinkled, fire-alarmed, and all put up to code. This is something that we worked with time with the planning department to make sure this is a product that they wanted to see in the neighborhood. So we did decrease the height of the building and we did keep the same bedroom count, we just reduced, we increased the amount of units from four to six on it, basically two per floor. And I will have the architect to talk a little bit about the zoning table and the zoning relief that's being required, but it's all staying in the same footprint of what is existing, we're not expanding the footprint whatsoever, we're just reconfig, we're, it's already, actually, we're shrinking the top of the building, we're bringing it down. It's more of just reconfiguration of the inside of the structure itself.
Okay.
Hello? Good evening, members of the board. My name is Danny Martinez, I'm with KDI. I'll present to you the project. Basically, Anthony touched on most of the main aspects of the project. We're looking into improving the property after it burned down. For example, we're providing snowbank removal on the parking, on the site plan. We're also providing a trash enclosure, we're providing access to the basement. The new building, as Anthony mentioned, it will have the same bedroom count, however, it will have more units. Basically, the existing building, as it is now, has four bedrooms on the ground floor and eight bedrooms total on the upper floors. We're basically looking to standardize all the units, and all the units will have two bedrooms standards, which is what is sought right now in the market. Basically, we're proposing to rebuild the third floor, and we can keep going with the If we can go to the elevations. Next slide, yep. Okay, so as we can see here, the original building is about 40 feet with 11 inches. Our new proposed roof will be about 33/1, which is seven feet and 10 feet, seven feet and 10 inches less than the existing ridge of the roof. We're proposing, on providing, the third floor will be architecturally contextual with what's already in sight. We're proposing, you know, architectural features that will accent the classical design of the building and.
Are there decks in the back? Is that what I'm seeing, or is that just landings?
No, so on the left, that's the existing, and on the right is the proposed building, so that way you can see the height difference.
So there's no land, okay, alright.
Exactly. Some other things that we're doing, we're putting condensers on the roof for the four units at the top, we're doing the other two condensers in the ground floor. As Anthony mentioned, the building will be fitted with an automatic sprinkler system, and the units will have about 807 square feet standard for them.
There's no parking?
Yes, so if we go back up to the site plan.
Ah, okay, sorry.
And I'll go over a little bit of the zoning. So the only element that we, that is, doesn't comply, that is, also doesn't comply in the existing, is the dwelling units per, dwelling units in terms of the lot size. As you can see on the existing, it's about 300 square feet per dwelling unit, on the existing is 100, 1,772, and on the proposed, about 1,181 per dwelling unit. The other, the other conditions, front and side setback, they're existing non-conforming. So we're just infilling that third floor and copying the second floor on the third floor. For the parking spaces, we're proposing two additional parking spaces over on this side.
For a total of how many?
For a total of 10 parking spaces.
I'm sorry, three? 10?
10 parking spaces, and we have a requirement of nine, so we're providing one additional parking space. And as I already mentioned, we're proposing the snowbank removal, we're proposing trash enclosure. So overall, we're doing improvements to the existing property. Lastly, if we want to go to the floor plans, we're providing a bike room for tenants and we're providing storage units for them in the basement. We have a bike room and we have our mechanical, and we have storage room for the other units. Here's a sprinkler room. So overall, I believe that the proposal is improving the existing property. And this is about as much of the material as I have to present to you today.
Thank you. I do also want to note that we did talk to some of the abutters. They were concerned because, because of the multiple bedrooms, there's a lot of people living in the existing structure, and so they're, I can speak, and I don't know if any of them are here tonight, but they were here last time, and when they saw the plans, I can represent that they were actually very happy that it was going to be a smaller bedroom count because there was a lot of people living in all these multiple bedroom units prior to the fire and my client acquiring the property. So that was one of the things they were happy about. They're also happy about the additional parking. So we actually have more than what we need for parking, and my clients did not try to expand the footprint on that. In fact, they're spending a lot of money on detail to make the actual outside of the building look more, to match the first floor and the second floor and third floor, instead of the box that it currently looks like on the top floor. So they, and this is something that we worked hand-in-hand with the planning department before coming forward this board. And I thank the board for this time.
Does anybody have any questions at this time? Are these rental units or?
They're rentals.
Marilyn?
They're market, they're market.
Market, yes.
And landscaping plan? Any landscaping or?
We do have landscaping on the property.
Yeah.
You can see it on the site plan. So there is landscaping in the back area, in the front of the house, and on the side of the house. The rest of it's parking, existing parking.
Is that going to be yard space, like usable yard space?
Yes, yes.
It's a lot.
So it's a pretty good amount of space for that area and still have 10 parking spaces.
Yeah. Any other questions before I open it up to the public? Joan?
So is it a new owner?
Yes, my client recently acquired the property, it was in fire, and he's redoing the building.
Okay, so.
So, sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, John.
Now, there's a huge tree in front of that property, is that going to remain there?
Is there a tree on the property, in front of the property? Can we look at the existing conditions, John? Sorry.
It should be on the last page.
Last page.
Last page?
15, I think. That one, is it? That's on the street, so that's something we can't control. If the city wanted us to replace it with a new tree, we would gladly replace that with a new tree.
Oh, no, 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 I was asking because it's a very old tree, and it kind of overshadows the building, so I just wondered in terms of navigating around it and landscaping.
Yeah, and in fact, in fact, if you look at this picture, you can get a better idea, you see how it looks like this. Now it's going to mirror each other and the decks are going to be gone, so it's going to have a nicer curb appeal than what's currently on-site now.
Okay. John, go ahead.
You're keeping within the existing building footprint, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
As I said, this will not be the only opportunity you'll have to speak on this, but I'm going to open it up to the public. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this? There being none, I am not closing this. You will go to the zoning, the planning board on the 27th and back here on the 11th.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, thank you, members of the board.
We're going to be skipping over 2023-08, which is 157 Crescent Ave. Sorry about that, as we're waiting for Hugo. And we're going to move on to 2023-09, 8385 Library Street. Maria Teixeira, public here, for a special permit and variance seeking approval. Are we going to do them together?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was going to say, and I would think that, and I would like to take, there's two of them here, actually. In 2023-13, which is also 81 Library Street, also by the same petitioner, and they are, they seem to be commingled, so while we'll address them, we'll vote on them or deal with them as two separate cases. It makes sense to hear it in total. So why don't you fill us in as to what's planned for those two?
Sure. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, for the record. My name is Richard Linds with the business address of 245 Sumner Street in East Boston on behalf of Maria Teixeira, who's the petitioner. I'd just like to point, I did receive the most recent updated report from the planning department, and I apologize, Mr. De Priest, I don't know if there's an error in the description, it says renovate four-family structure containing a total of 12 bedrooms, reconfigure space.
It might have been a cut-and-paste error.
Cut-and-paste.
That sounds like the previous case.
Yeah. I was reading and saying, I didn't think that's what we were doing here, but I just want to make sure that's clear.
No, no, it's a special permit and variance seeking approval for the subdivision and the construction of two, of two, two residential dwelling unit structures, which does not meet the requirements for a minimum lot size, side setback, and combined side yard setback. Existing residence slash lot fails to meet requirements for a minimum lot size, side yard setback, and combined required side yard setback. Lot A, 83 Library fails to meet the requirements for minimum lot size, front yard setback, side yard setback, off-street parking, and minimum usable open space. Lot B, 85 Library fails to meet the requirements for minimum lot size, front yard setback, side yard setback, off-street parking, and the minimum usable open space. And 81, the description on 81 is also for a special permit and variance seeking approval for the subdivision of an existing lot to allow for the construction of two, two residential dwelling unit structures at 8385, and the proposed subdivision at 81 does not meet the requirements for minimum lot size, side yard setback, and combined side yard setback. Existing, existence slash lot fails to meet the requirements for minimum lot size, side yard setback, and combined required side yard setbacks.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Is that the correct description?
Yeah, I'm glad we got that unpacked for the record, so I appreciate that. I did provide the planning department with the slide deck, so as he's waiting to get that up, I'll try to unpack what we're hearing. Seems to be a lot going on, but I think it's a little bit more straightforward. So with respect to the current property, there's several addresses involved, 81, 83, and 85 Library Street. 81 Library Street, for all intents and purposes, an existing separately assessed lot with a single-family dwelling on it. Because it is in common ownership with 83 and 85 Library Street, the parcels are de-merged for zoning purposes, and therefore, any effort to subdivide the property or to utilize that property that exists that's presently vacant requires relief under the code because it does trigger a number of violations. So I will address 81 Library Street first, where there is no work being proposed other than the creation, if you will, of an imaginary lot line that presently exists for assessing purposes but doesn't exist for zoning purposes. That is a single-family dwelling.
Is this an attempt to unmerge, John? Is that what, so, okay, alright.
Yeah, because it wouldn't meet the side yard setback and doesn't meet minimum lot size requirement, so it is merged for purposes of Chapter 40A. So as we're waiting for that, I'll try to walk through, if you can illustrate a little bit, the issues that are involved. The simpler process, our project is the 81 Library, which is the existing structure. With respect to that, it does require relief for several items. First is the minimum lot size. Even though currently, the lot as merged would comply with the minimum lot size, if we want to use that parcel independently of the vacant lot, we only would have 2,100 square feet, and therefore, it doesn't comply with the 5,000-square-foot minimum requirement. In addition, because the side yard requirement is five feet, the existing conditions, although would be pre-existing, non-conforming for purposes of zoning today, any change to that lot, including the vacant lot, would trigger the side yard requirement. So on the right side of our property, once we see it on the plan, we're not in compliance with the five-foot setback. And with respect to the left side as well, we would be short of the side yard requirements. And so we do require relief, even though we aren't proposing to change anything with respect to the footprint of that existing building, simply because we intend to use the larger vacant lot for development purposes. Here we go. So if we can jump down to, I think the architectural site plan is probably the best place to start.
And what, is there something on 81 now?
A single-family home.
So, and that, so you want that single-family home to stay by itself as a little single-family home, and then you want to build on 8385?
That is correct.
Okay.
Yeah. So with respect to the vacant portion of land, that lot combined is a little over six, oh, just under 6,800 square feet. We're proposing to create two, essentially two separate lots and construct two, two-unit townhouses in each one of those lots. Each of those will contain a total of three-bedroom units. This is intended for rental purposes. So I do have in this slide deck that we were intended to homeownership, but I did talk to my client and rental is the intended use for the property.
Let me just be, again, I just want to be clear, so I'm clear in my head, so John, I'm understanding. So 8385 is currently one thing, one lot, because it's been merged and they want to separate it.
Eighty, yeah, 81, 83, 85 are considered one lot for zoning purposes because they do not meet the minimum zoning requirements for that district.
And because they were owned by one person, so they merged.
Correct. And the goal here is to separate them, keep the 81 as a single family and then redevelop the other two.
But it seems like, but is the plan to also separate 8385 into two separate lots?
They would be their own individual lots as well.
Right, so we're taking what is currently one lot and dividing it into three.
Yep, equally divided, those would each be about, just under 3,400 square feet each, so 3,390 square feet for each lot.
I'm sorry, I'm having trouble with the download.
So while we're waiting for that, I don't mind waiting, or do you want me to make the record on the relief that's necessary? Just describe the building.
Well, unless there's, if you, there's some narrative you want to provide, otherwise we can wait for the actual physical to see what it looks like.
I'm going to have to, I'm going to have to open each page individually.
Okay. I can tell you, probably jump to, jump to page four, that just gives a quick site overview so we can see the neighborhood context.
Okay.
Yeah, so just giving the board an understanding of what the surrounding context looks like, the type of architecture and certainly the size of the buildings. What we're proposing is quite contextual with what we do see in the surrounding vicinity. If we can try to open. Maybe go to page, page 10, John?
I'm sorry, page eight?
10.
10.
10.
Maybe 11, I apologize, I think we already ran through that. Perfect. So what we're showing here is the architect's rendering for the proposed townhouses. These are, you know, identical buildings on each lot and each of these would contain two units each, so.
And that's 83 and 85?
That is correct. We accessed the rear of the property by a common driveway. That would be, and one of these questions had come up in the planning comments, that would be an easement that would be recorded in the registry of deeds for, to allow joint access and joint maintenance with respect to the driveway. Each of these units would have a total of two parking spaces, but they're arranged as a tandem spot. So John, the next, maybe the next page would give us the site plan. Perfect. So we can see here the proposed plot and site plan showing the existing lot, if you don't mind me walking over.
No, please.
Probably.
Do that. Just carry that with you.
So we're talking earlier about 81. This is the existing structure and as you can see, if you include all of the existing vacant lot, it certainly would comply with the side yard requirement, which is within 2.3 feet of the assessed property line, but certainly wouldn't be if it was considered merged with the other lot. So that is one of the items that we're requesting a variance on the, on the existing single family. We also have a non-conforming condition existing on the right side. For the new lots, we show the driveway, as I mentioned, coming up the middle and the parking area located to the rear and then the footprint of 81, I'm sorry, 83 and 85 with units one and two for each building. You can go to the next slide, John? Is this how it came over to you, John? Because I think we sent it as a link or did it open up that way?
It did open, when I downloaded it, it did open up, I'm having trouble.
Yeah, I just didn't know if it was something we had sent. So we're providing the landscape plan, this probably illustrates a little bit better for the board, the location of the parking. And as I said, we do have a common easement that comes into the back of the property.
So it's that one driveway that, so is that one driveway that's intended for both buildings?
That is correct. So it's 10 feet in width, but the separation between the buildings is 16 feet. So our building, our property line comes to the middle with an eight-foot setback from the building itself. So each of these units would have tandem parking so that we wouldn't be blocking the other unit owner in. So for example, unit two would have perhaps three and four and unit one with one and two.
How would they, how would they get out of there? That's, how was, that's?
So we have an aisle width of 24 feet in separation between, between the parking space, which I believe is sufficient. I think 20, 20 feet is the minimum.
No, 24.
So you have enough, enough room to back the vehicle out and to have the other vehicle move. And again, the easement would cover this entire area in between, so you'd allow for maneuverability as well as access to the back of the property. We show our preliminary landscaping here and I do believe we provided a legend to the planning department as well as to the type of species that we're proposing with respect to that.
Right, yes.
If we want to jump to the next slide, I believe that is the floor plan? Maybe one more. So the layout pretty much repeats for both buildings, they're identical in design. The lower level, basement level, there's no habitable space, it's strictly for storage and utility. When we get up, and again, these are side by side showing separated by a party wall. The first level shows that we do have a living area for both, both of the units. When we get up to the second floor, we have two bedrooms, two baths and then a primary bedroom on the third level serviced by a primary bath as well.
So the third level and the second, the second and third levels are one, one unit? Is that?
So these are townhouse styles, so each side is one unit, yeah. So three levels total plus a basement used for the, for the storage and the utilities. You can go to the next slide, John, please. So showing our elevations, we are showing these as, they present as three-story buildings with height just under 35 feet, so I believe we are in compliance with what the requirements are for that, of that district. I can run through all of the relief that's necessary for these two buildings as well if the board, unless the board has any questions in the meantime.
I'm sorry, repeat that again, I'm sorry.
I can run through the relief, the zoning relief that's necessary unless the board has any.
Yeah, you may as well, yeah, do that. Because it seems pretty substantial.
So with respect to the lot area, it does require 3,500 square feet per unit, but not less than 7,500 square feet. We are proposing the 3,390 square feet total. Minimum lot size is 3,500 per unit with 1,695 square feet being proposed, so there is relief necessary. Our minimum front setback, the requirement is 10 feet, we are at 5 feet, so we do require relief for that. I do believe that is consistent, however, with the setback, the general setback along that side of the street. Our side yard setback is one-fourth of the building height or eight, eight feet, six inches, we're at five feet, one inch on the outsides of each of the buildings. So on both the far right and the far left of each of the proposed structures, we're at 5.1 feet. We do have eight feet in the middle separating both buildings as well. Usable open space.
But that's sort of, that's the parking, that's the driveway.
Correct, yep. 300 square feet times two families, 600 square feet, where being, it's stated that we don't have any usable open space and I assume that's based upon the area that's dedicated to parking, although there is a bit of open space in the, around the site.
Parking, walkways, driveways cannot be considered and to be considered usable open space, they have to be at least 10 feet on each dimension.
Yep. And then with respect to parking location, we have not within five feet of the rear lot line, which we obviously are proposing parking based on the tandem width of the spaces, not within five feet of the building wall, and then we're proposing tandem space. And that repeats for both buildings, so there's same relief would be necessary of both variance and special permit for, for those items. I'll pause there and answer any questions of the board.
Yeah, there's a retaining wall, where's the retaining wall?
To the rear.
And who's responsible for that retaining wall?
I believe in connection with our construction, we'll have to investigate whether or not that has to be repaired or replaced and certainly if it's within our boundary, it's our obligation, but certainly we'll work with the neighbor to the rear to address any concerns during our construction.
Okay, so, yeah, so there's going to have to be, somebody's going to have to make sure the retaining wall is okay.
My guess is it'll be done in connection with this construction.
Okay. Any other questions before I open it up?
Arthur?
No. Did you say, did you mention how many bathrooms each unit has? Was it two?
I believe, bear with me one moment, I believe we have on the.
And three bedrooms, actually, bathroom today.
Yeah, it's a three-bedroom, right? They're all three bedrooms?
Yeah, I see on the second floor, we have a full bath and washer/dryer room. For the top level, the primary bedroom, we do have a full bath. And on the lower level, we have a half bath, so two and a half bath for each unit.
And what about like the trash and who's going to maintain the property?
Maintain the property, so likely professionally managed with four units. Trash would be stored inside, we would have ample space within the unit, obviously to store trash in the basement as well.
Well, but you just said something interesting. Is it four units or is it two? I mean, it's basically, because they could, if they're separated, they don't need to stay in the same ownership, they could in fact be separately.
They could. Her intent is to hold and rent, so she'll continue owning all, all the units.
Now?
Correct.
Okay. So I'm saying, I'm saying, just saying there's managing four units. In theory, you're managing three separate, one unit, two unit, two unit.
Yes.
That's what we're talking about.
Correct.
So the tenants will be responsible for pulling the barrels out, kind of thing?
Yeah, typically in a building of, a development of this size, you would, you would have the tenants manage that as part of their lease.
Go ahead.
May I?
Yep.
My understanding is that if you own the unit, you cannot grant yourself a, an easement.
I'm sorry.
My understanding is that if you own the unit, you cannot grant yourself an easement.
I don't understand the question, meaning?
Well, you're proposing an easement for the two, for the access driveway.
Sure.
But you're, you're going to hold it under the same ownership.
Yeah, so, yeah, I don't get too far in the weeds. So from a title standpoint, it's done all the time. What, what you'd have to do is, we refer to it in the conveyancing practice as a straw. So you essentially create an entity, holds title, and then you have that entity grant, grant instruments back out and reserve the easement or put the easement, just, just record the easement from that entity to the new entity. So maybe you'd have a, you know, 8385 Library Trust one and then 8583 Library, or 83 Library Trust, an 85 Library Trust. And the Trust one would grant and reserve an easement or grant an easement as well. Done, done regularly in conveyancing.
Okay, all right.
So again, go ahead.
Why would you do that? I mean, what's the purpose of having one entity, you know, grant the easement to the other one? I mean, what's that, what's the purpose? Is it just because if you decide to split it and sell it and then the easement goes away? I mean, what's that?
Yeah, easements, through the chair, easements are in perpetuity. So when you create the easement, it's for purposes of forever. You intend to create it for purposes of ensuring access for the driveway and for parking. And when the instrument is recorded in the registry of deeds, it's intended to run with the land forever. So it's not intended to be a set period of time.
Is that just so there's no questions about the sharing of the, the lots or, I mean?
Yeah, I mean, it would make good practical sense that if you're going to have a driveway that's accessible to both buildings, you'd want to record that and clarify what the rights of the respective parties would be, even if it's the same ownership at the end, because as the chair had mentioned, if you did sell one building off, that person would purchase that with the expectation that they'd have access to the back of the building.
That's what I was, I didn't hear that, so that's, that's the reason why you do that.
Yeah, easement will preserve that.
Yeah, so if you sell one building, the other person.
Correct, yep.
John, from a, from a practical point of view, is it, is it, I don't know, Maureen, advantageous, I don't know if that's the right word, to have two units on two, two units per lot on two lots or just four units on one bigger lot? Because I'm still quite, I'm not quite understanding, since one person is owning it, this interest in particularly in separating, if she's going to rent this, if she's going to sell them, I understood maybe why you'd have separate lots. I'm just not quite understanding why you're, you're taking 83 and 85 and splitting it in half. I don't quite understand that, so.
So, if I may, there, from a strategic standpoint, from, and again, going back to title, financing, other reasons, sequencing of construction, when they may happen, owning this as a four-unit townhouse property versus two, two units certainly has an impact on, you know, how you can go about your financing, how about you, how you can go about structuring, financing later after construction. And for us, it seems that this is the best strategy for this client, to have them as separate lots, separate individual lots.
So these are, you're going to be looking at sequential construction rather than, is the, is the construction going to happen in the same time or is the expectation you will build on one unit, one lot and then build later on the other lot?
I, I wish I could answer exactly how it'll work by the time this is permitted, but I think that we want the option that if we want to build one and pause for the second one and then build the second one at a later date, to have that ability in doing that. Whereas if we had approvals for four units, the financing would be for all four units where we can finance this sort of a little bit more creatively. And that doesn't necessarily mean we wouldn't build them all together, but at least we're preserving our options in order to do that.
Okay, so I'm going, since again, even though they're sort of, they come together, they are considered separate cases. So I'm going to first publicly, and again, we won't be deciding on this because it will be going to the planning board on the 27th and back here again on July 11th. But is there anyone here who wishes to speak? I'm going to ask you if you want to wish to speak on 8385, but if you want to talk about 81 at the same time, that's fine. But is there anyone here who wishes to speak on 8385 Library Street? There being none, we're going to, this, we won't close the, up, sir, please come and name yourself, please, identify yourself and your name and address, please.
Pedro Florentino, 51 Library. The one thing that I got to say is, being an owner on Library Street, when you go over from Gerish to Library, you see the difference in the neighborhood. And it's because Gerish has been developed. So I think that when we look at improving the neighborhood, we definitely need to make changes on Library Street. I think that new development is required to really improve the transition from Gerish Street to Library Street.
Okay, thank you, sir. And one else who wishes to speak? Okay, so we're not going to close the public portion of this, we're going to move this to the zone, the planning board on the 27th. Now with regard to 81, is there anything specific or separate with that that you want to address that's different or in addition to than what you just talked about with 8381? So pretty much the testimony that you're giving on 81 is ditto the testimony you gave on 8385.
Yeah, and I'm pretty sure I covered it, madam chair, through the, you know, essentially the minimal relief that's necessary and the extent of what's happening with respect to 81. It's more from a technical standpoint, because of the merger issue, nothing really happens to 81, it really happens on the vacant lot.
But you're creating, you're creating, you're creating variance requests or needs, you're creating inconsistencies by making this lot smaller. So you're not, you're not planning to build on it, 81?
Creating, nothing changes with what you see with respect to 81 as it sits today, including the assessed parcel. It's really just because of the, I like to, I refer to it as a fiction of the lot itself from a zoning standpoint, once they do come into common ownership. If these lots had never come into common ownership prior to, you know, whenever 40A enacted the merger doctrine, we would be in a position where 81 would remain as a pre-existing non-conforming structure, non-conforming lot, and the development of 8385 would be done separately without any regard to 81. The issue is because they've become, come into ownership, we have to address 81 in connection with 8385.
Is there anyone who has questions on 81? There being none, I'm opening the public portion of this again, is there anyone who wishes to speak on 81? There being none, this will not be your only opportunity to speak and they will, planning board, 27, July 11th here.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And look who's here, and Hugo has joined us, so we are going to go back to the top of the program here and I'm going to move it over to Joseph, to Arthur, it's you, so.
All right, next case is 1517 Grove Street, James D'Amico Jr.
My name's James D'Amico, I'm the owner.
He's the chair.
I'm the owner of 1517 Grove Street.
Okay.
You know, we bought this property and it's got three bedrooms, four bedroom, four bedroom, it's a legal three-family. We have the opportunity to put a driveway to the left of the property. It's 12 by 17. More parking would not, shouldn't be an issue, but at the same time, I wouldn't be here if it was on the opposite side of the street. There's no parking on the side of the street on. There's no parking on the side of the street on Grove, and we wouldn't be impeding on any, any butter. So I think it's, I think it's an admirable request.
John, what did the planning board have to...
Planning board recommended approval with standard conditions, and that the tenants of the building will be ineligible to participate in the city's resident sticker parking program. An issue came up at the last board meeting, my report indicated that, based on this plan, there appeared to be only six feet between the property and the building. With the petitioner's permission, I went, I actually measured it. It actually comes out to be ten feet at this point and fourteen feet up here. So that's plenty of room to get vehicles in there, and it's about thirty feet in length, so you could probably squeeze two, it'd be very tight, but you could probably squeeze two.
Okay. This is a public hearing, does anybody have any, wanna speak on this matter before I close the public portion? Okay, I'm gonna close the public portion, does the board have any questions?
John, the measurement of the driveway, I think was short of foot, I guess, for the long?
It was about, it was about thirty feet in length. From, from this, from the point of sidewalk to the point where it got, where it began to narrow, is about thirty feet in length.
How about from the property line to the house?
At this point, at this point, it was ten feet wide.
Oh, ten feet.
And at this point, it's, you could have fourteen feet.
Now, my question is, when you go, or the person who's gonna leave there or use it, when they go out, the wall that is on, on your left side, that the park, it's gonna block the view for the person backing out from the driveway? If you're gonna use a small car?
Well, I think that, you know, you ease out of any driveway anyway, but I don't, I don't think it would be a problem. I mean, there's a speed bump, maybe twenty feet up slows the traffic down, and, I don't know, I think that someone could back in, we could back into that driveway and drive out and get a good view. The wall isn't that high.
But you're gonna feed a small car on that driveway?
Not sure.
Are you gonna need any type of mirror?
I mean, we could, we could put a smaller car there.
Are you gonna need any type of mirror to see the person driving, you know, for the pedestrians going out?
Well, we could, again, we could adapt to make it safe.
Yeah, maybe put, like, as Hugo suggested, putting a sign or a mirror, or something that alerts people also. Not only the people that are parking there, but the pedestrians that are crossing the parking area. Sometimes there's kids, or, you know, people walking by, and they don't see a car coming out, kind of thing, so that would be helpful, you know?
Yeah.
Do you plan on putting asphalt down, or on the ground?
Any other questions?
Joe and I are not voting on this.
John, can you bring up the variance, right, we have a variance?
I'm sorry?
We have the variance, right, so he's got a...
The list of variance questions are on the table.
Do you want, does he want...
Oh, you want, I'm sorry, you want the list.
Okay.
Sorry.
So, yeah, so you know the, can you, alright, so the first requirement is the variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape of topography, and such land structure, and especially affecting such land structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district which is located.
I believe we're, desirable relief be granted without substantial detriment.
You gotta go one at a time, go number one, do one at a time.
Pardon, I'm sorry.
Gotta do one at a time.
Oh. The variance is sought because of soil conditions, shape, topography, topography, or such land, structures, especially affecting such land structures, but not affecting generally the zoning district in which it's located. I think we're there, a little enforcement of provisions chapter.
So on, so on one, your parking lot's gonna not, is not generally affecting the zoning of the soil, right, John?
Right.
If I may suggest, if you look at the shape of the parcel with the structure there, there is no way that you can develop the parking space there without being within five feet of the side property or within five feet of the building itself.
Okay?
Yes.
Alright, does the board agree with that? Does, the board agrees with it? Yes, yes, okay. Alright, a little enforcement of the provisions of this chapter would involve a substantial hardship financial otherwise to the petitioner. If you didn't have the parking lot, you probably couldn't rent, like John, you couldn't rent, couldn't, couldn't get people to rent the apartment. Correct, is that, is that true?
Yes.
Okay, does the board agree with that?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Desirable leave may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good. You're not taking parking away from the...
Not taking parking away from...
From anybody, taking cars off the street.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes.
Desirable leave may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intended purpose of this chapter.
That's what's expected in that area, that kind of stuff is what goes on in this area.
I don't believe so.
But that's what, parking and housing are what's in this area, right?
Right.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion to, for, to approve case number twenty-two-three dash zero-six, fifteen seventeen Grove Street, James D'Amico Junior for special permit and variance seeking approval for application for a driveway opening permit, which does not meet requirement for front yard, setback, sideline, yada, yada, with the standard conditions. And if we could, could we add signage or a mirror there? Just for the people that are exiting and entering and people that are...
She's not asking you, she's asking John.
Yes, can we add that, yes, can we add that? Yes?
That can be done.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Alright, good luck, thank you. Okay, the next...
The next one's still yours, Arthur.
Yeah, the next case is one fifty-seven Crescent Ave, Mark Meads. I'll have him, I have it up here.
This is just a special permit.
Hi, good evening, everybody, for the, sorry.
Good evening, that's okay. Speak up a little bit, sorry, I try not to get...
Pick it up, it's easier.
Go a little higher.
Yeah, no, pick it, just...
How's that? Okay.
You're tall, it works.
I said I'd never perform again, but here I am. Okay, for the record, Peter Blaisdell from Williams and Sporages, here representing M and M Development. So I think we kinda talked to you a little bit last time we were here on, on May ninth. This project was permitted three years ago by the Conservation Commission, the planning board, and, I'm sorry, the plan recommendation to approve, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Twenty nineteen hit, and Rapid Flow took a pretty, pretty bad financial turn because most of its revenue kinda went downstream, literally, because of the closing of Logan and the closing of Encore and that type of thing. So, a few months ago, Mr. Meads asked me to come back and start revisiting the permits. We submitted some documentation to Mr. De Priest, and he was very helpful in getting us to get back through the Conservation Commission and extend the order of conditions. But as you know, the special permit has elapsed, so we refiled with the Zoning Board of Appeals, came back, made another presentation. We were supposed to be before the planning board again for a recommendation. We had the dates mixed up, so we did not get there, it was not, because we didn't care. I was not aware that we had the dates mixed up, but it sounds to me like it wasn't a huge problem, wasn't for any fault of the project, that type of thing. So I spoke with John, and he said, well, just come back to the ZBIA and let's just explain that it was just a miscommunication, and come back before and ask for any feedback that you have. So just to recap, this is going to be the site for Rapid Flow. It's basically where he's gonna store his trucks and have his office. The site is entirely within the flood zone, it's gonna be constructed with flood zone construction. We're asking for relief on parking, but the normal parking numbers don't really apply to this project, so it's gonna go from twenty-five down to ten. There was a typo that Mr. De Priest pointed out in my application, I wrote down twenty-one, so we can cure that with the decision. There is also gonna be a little reduction in the width of the aisles from twenty-four feet to twenty-two feet, and we asked for some parking within five feet of the lot lines. We're entirely within the LI two district, which means we're basically surrounded by commercial properties. We back up to the railroad, so there won't be any detriment or really any non-harmony with the neighborhood with this project. If anything, it'll be a good project, right now the lot is basically vacant, he's got a trailer on it, he's been working out of that, and he would like to get his vehicles secured by putting them indoors in the evening. So with that, if you have any questions, please feel free, but I don't have anything else to add.
John, your thoughts right now, before I open it up?
The planning board, as the petition indicated, the planning board did not recommend approval because they weren't there to provide the board any information. Was not related to the merits of the case, it's just they were not there to provide information. Recommending approval with standard conditions as applicable, the INI payment required, and linkage fee payment required as well.
Okay, I'm gonna open this up to the public, does anybody from the public wish to speak on this? Hearing none, I will close the public hearing, I mean, public speaking portion. Does the board have any questions or comments?
And they're entering, I think we talked about this at the last meeting, but they're entering, entering one way and exiting...
That's correct.
But they're both entering and exiting through Crescent Ave.
Right, yeah, you come in, you can go clockwise around and then go out the other side.
Now, the entrance for everybody, trucks and cars?
Yes, correct, anyone that works there or visitors.
No, it will be signed, they will say do not enter or exit only, or something like that?
You know, I think that's something that we did discuss early on, certainly there'll be probably painted arrows kind of where, kind of where I showed them on there, but if you wanna condition it with some signs, absolutely. Anything to keep thunderbenders out of the way would be great.
I would recommend a signage plan, provided to meet for approval.
Yeah.
Can you remind us the lighting around the back? What the lights, are there going to be lights on the, on the back area or the whole building?
So I believe what he's gonna do is just do what you'll see in a lot of commercial buildings nowadays, just building mounted lights that just cast, cast down, so not to really spill any light over the property, but enough so that it's secure and you can see your way out to the car. Are we gonna put big freestanding light poles? No.
Nobody will be lighting around the building?
There will be lighting around the building, yes. And there's also, I believe there's also street lighting on Crescent Ave as well. The back will be a little dark, I think, by the railroad, but other than that, that's, that's once you get past the back.
What are the hours of operation again?
I'm not a hundred percent sure, because I think his normal hours of operation are, you know, probably eight o'clock in the morning till four-thirty, but they do a lot of emergency calls, especially around the cities and, you know, clog drains, clog sewers, that type of thing. Somebody might get a call with an emergency, they need to go do it, so somebody might have to show up there to pick up, pick up equipment to head out, but yeah, that wouldn't be staff and that type of thing, probably eight to four-thirty. But I can, I can double check with, with Mark and ask him, send it back to you if you'd like.
Colleen?
How many vehicles are parked there?
So you can have, there's twelve, basically six bays on either side of the T, which would be where the equipment goes. And then any employees that might come here and something like that, they can park. They'll, they'll park their vehicle, go grab one of the big work trucks, go do the job, come back, and then leave. So lighting, signage, hours of operation, and, did I miss anything?
And the office for how many, in, like, office staff?
I don't know what he has for staff, not a lot, I mean, he's got maybe two or three people that might work inside, just for billing and...
My recollection, it was, it was five or less.
Yeah, I mean, with, you know, with Mark.
And not all there at the same time.
No, no, it's not, it's not, it's not a big office.
And this company, this is not a new company, it's a new location for them, they are up the street a little bit for a little Crescent Ave.
Yeah, Mark, he had, he had a piece of property up the street a little bit, and he was waiting, I believe he sold that, and then he, he was waiting to build this project, like I said, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen, and then, you know, the bottom kinda fell out, and then he's been building the business back up again, I think to the point where now he can secure a construction loan, which is good.
Are they gonna put a company sign in the building?
I don't recall, I know that we had talked, I think, one other time about signage, so I don't know at this point. I think you do have a sign by law in town that we have to comply with, if I'm not mistaken. John might be able to tell me, but I don't remember if we need a separate permit for a sign at this point.
But we can include that in the signage plan.
Put it, put it right in there.
Any onsite signs.
Yeah, I know, I know the town that I live, and we have a very strict bylaw for what we have and what you can put up, and so you can condition it for signage, is for, not only the building, but also for the parking lot if you'd like.
And the trash and the waste is being disposed of?
Yeah, we've got our own dumpster in the back, yeah, so that'll be, that'll be picked up privately, so the city won't pay for that.
Does the board wanna vote, or wait until those questions get answered?
Joe and I are not voting on this one.
Okay.
Joan, do you, do you wanna wait, or do you wanna vote?
Yeah.
We could vote, maybe just have him answer those questions for us?
Or we can include them as conditions of the permit.
Joan, we'll just have, like, any questions that he was not able to answer, we'll make it as a condition to, to approve it, just so that he, so that we have the answers, and we'll have John get those back to us. You know, I think at the hours of operation, we, that's a good question to ask, right? So, but we can, we can vote, right?
Yeah.
Alright, why don't we do that then?
Appreciate it.
Yeah, you're welcome. Is there a motion on the, from the board?
I wanna make a motion for twenty-two-three dash zero-eight, one fifty-seven Crescent Ave, Mark Meads Trustee, for special permit seeking approval to construct a two-story structure with proposed use of a trade shop, including accessory office space, which does not meet the minimum requirement of free parking spaces with the special conditions or...
Standing conditions plus the special ones that...
Standing conditions plus the special ones that we just added. Okay.
And the signage that he...
Oh, in a signage plan.
A second.
Hold those in favor. All right, good luck.
Thank you, everybody. Appreciate it.
And now we're back to our regularly scheduled programming. 2023-10-122 Warren Ave, 122 Warren Ave VG LLC, for special permit and variance seeking approval for the construction of a two-family dwelling within 122 Warren Ave, with an existing three-family dwelling to remain within proposed subdivided lot. Pursuant to Section 3478A, no lot on which a building existing or is erected shall be altered, and no structure shall be rearranged so as to create or increase a non-conformance with this ordinance. Lot 1, proposed subdivided lot to contain proposed two-family structure, which fails to meet the requirements for minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, minimum combined yard setback, minimum number of stories, maximum height, and required parking space property line buffer. Lot 2, proposed subdivided lot to contain existing three-family structure, which fails to meet the requirements for minimum frontage, minimum side yard setback, minimum lot size, minimum open space, and minimum combined side yard setback. Again, this is the first time we'll be hearing this, so we will not be deciding on this today. This will go before the Planning Board on the 27th of June and back here on July 11th. So, the floor is yours.
Thank you, and good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Again, Richard Linds, 245 Sumner Street, the East Boston MBA for the petitioner. With me is Richard Beliveau from 122 Warren VG LLC, who is the owner of the property at 122, 124 Warren Ave. With respect to this proposal, some of the members may remember this project from some time back, when this is before the board, for a very similar proposal. We have made some updates to that proposal that was originally presented. Just a quick overview of what we're talking about. Maybe jump, John, if we could jump down. I don't know if we're able to enlarge the screen so we can see it. Yeah, so our proposal would subdivide existing, a little over 15,000, 300-square-foot lot. There's a pre-existing three-unit dwelling to the far right side of the property. We would take the new lot, which is approximately 7,600 square feet, and propose to construct a new two-unit dwelling, and we are proposing to include substantial landscaping around the site, improvements for drainage, as well as a total of seven parking space. I know in the comments from the planning department, there were some questions regarding the types of plans that were submitted and whether or not the parking was going to be all on one lot or two lots. I can clarify that certainly for the board with the plans that we've provided. So, if we can jump to the next slide, we can review some of the site context. So, a quick bird's eye overview of the existing structure. You can see to the left side, the lot and the area that we are proposing to subdivide for the new two-family dwelling. Next slide, please. Bird's eye view of the site. Again, the existing three-family structure located to the far right and the land located to the right side of the property for the new two-unit. Next slide, please.
To the right side of the property?
Right, I'm sorry, left side, I apologize.
To the left side of property, okay.
Right, if you're looking at it from the back. Sorry. Next slide, please. So, just a real quick overview, and we probably can jump back to this, John, after I do the presentation, just talk about the relief that's necessary. If we can continue on with the site context, that would be helpful. Another view, just to give you a different context. Again, this, at this slide, it would be on the right side of the existing structure that we've identified with the red dot. Next slide, please. Street view showing the existing structure. Again, this is a pre-existing three-family dwelling that will remain. There have been some updates to this building. I know there were some renovations that were done. The building is fully leased. Tenants are living there currently. There's no displacement in connection with our proposal, as we would not be making any modifications to this building itself, other than the exterior for landscaping and parking and some updates to the drainage. Next slide, please. Different view, looking up Warren, so that you can see the right side of our building, as well as the area that would be proposed to be redeveloped. Next slide. Head-on view of the existing structure. Next slide. Existing, kept me nervous there, John. Existing slide, I mean, existing conditions in topography, showing the slope of our site. I'm sure the board may be familiar. The site does slope pretty significantly from Warren down towards the back property line, so there is a good deal of site work that would be involved, as well as updates for drainage. Next slide, please. This is probably where I'll grab the mic and walk over so we can talk a little bit about what we're looking at here, and this addresses certainly some of the comments that were made by planning. So, we do have, similar to the other presentation I made, a common driveway that would be able to access the rear area for parking. We did have a couple of different iterations of this plan that showed a total of seven parking spaces on the proposed subdivided site behind the new two-family. In consultation with the civil engineer, and certainly the amount of work that has gone into this for drainage improvement, has resulted in us making a change that we would have four parking spaces on-site, which would be compliant for the proposed new two-family. The three parking spaces that we are showing here on the existing lot, or with the existing structure would be, would be associated with a three-family, so those don't presently exist for purposes of how we have this configured, and this was a result of consultation with RJ O'Connell, which is one of the reasons, actually, that we had delayed moving forward at our last hearing, is to try to address a number of the drainage questions that did come up. So, the drainage plan and certainly the plan for parking, we feel is, is pretty much baked at this point, and again, we would have a common driveway that would access the parking area, and that would be maintained by an easement as well. And you can see the footprint of our building, the proposed structure here, in relationship to the existing structure, and then we could sort of...
Is the driveway straddle both parties, parcels, or is it located on one parcel?
So, we do have our proposed property line here. The driveway would be within the boundary of the new lot, but the lot to our right would have, would maintain an easement similar to the last presentation I made. Next slide, please. Probably jump down, one more than this. So, walking through the floor plans, this is our lower-level plan, and when we get to the elevations, we'll see how this relates to the actual elevation of the building. Because of the slope from Warren down to the back of the property, we do have, you know, a good amount of space to actually bring a full walkout level at that, what would be considered the basement level. However, it does have some pretty good height that we're able to access full-size windows and a walkout condition to the rear. So, and I think what we're showing, my eyesight is terrible, I apologize. I think what we're showing is two or three bedrooms in that lower level?
Four.
Yeah, it's a, it's a four-bed unit.
Three beds here and one bed on the first floor.
Yep, and then we have just sort of a open play area, an area towards the back that wouldn't be used for any additional bedrooms. Next slide, please. So, as we move up the building, our full, first, first-level plan, which would be living area and additional bedroom for that lower-level unit, that would be all part of Unit 1. Unit 2 starts on Level 2, and then we have additional bedrooms on the upper level shown here, which would be, we call it our Level 3 plan, but I believe we're identifying this as a four-story building based upon the grade of the site and how much of the building is exposed to the rear, the side of the property. Next slide, please. Just our section plan. We can jump back to this for reference. Next slide. We can skip over this as well. So, our elevation, and as you can see it from Warren, it does present as more of a two-and-a-half-story building, which is pretty consistent with the design and architecture that we do have for our existing structure to our right, but as you can see from our right-side elevation, you do have that condition where the slope from Warren down to the back of the property is pretty significant, and you do have that full walkout condition for that lower-level living space, which is part of Unit 1. We show the dormer that is oriented to the right side of the building, that allows for better ceiling height in that upper level, where we did show the primary bedroom for that upper-level unit. Next slide, please. So, showing our rear elevation along with our left elevation. Again, you can see that sloping condition coming down towards the back of the property, and then, as we indicated, it does present as four stories to the rear. However, this is largely in part due to the slope of the site itself. Had the site been level with Warren, most of that area would either be below grade and certainly not present as four stories. Next slide, please. So, we do have our elevation, and we included this to sort of illustrate more of the architectural design. I wouldn't say that the proximity to the existing building is entirely accurate. I think we're just trying to keep this as close to scale as possible. We can have him update the rendering itself, but just to give an idea of perspective of what this would look like from Warren, that is the, the proposed rendering concept. Next slide.
Do you think he would have the driveway between the two?
Driveway between, between the two, correct. And like I said, I don't know that it, sometimes tough to render when you're trying to keep the perspective of the building with the one you're showing, but the site plan does dictate what the width of that driveway will be, and we believe it's sufficient. Next slide, please. So, this is just a more detailed illustration of the grading, as well as the drainage that we're proposing. We do propose the on-site stormwater management for this, for the proposed subdivided lot. I know that was an important question at the last go-around for this project, so all of our, you know, stormwater management gets dealt with on-site. The consistent with the City of Chelsea's DPW regulations, and certainly the, the grading that will go along with this, including some retaining walls that would be added to the rear, really presents a significant improvement to some of the conditions that we think we heard at the last meeting, where, you know, concern for runoff and flooding was, was a major issue for properties sort of downstream from this site. One of the other planning comments was, what was the grade of our parking area located behind our existing three-family? We have shown here on the topo, include the topo lines for that grade, so it does gently slope back towards the back of the property, but this has been, this has been designed to be consistent with not only state building code, but the requirements or comments from DPW. Next slide, please. Just some other technical data for the drainage. We wanted to include that as our, in our packet, but we could certainly run, jump back to that if there's any specific questions. Next slide, please, and just our, our rendering a little bit more up close. So, I will pause there and ask if there are any specific questions of the board, and then we can run through what the specific relief is that would be necessary.
So, the last time we heard this, there were some pretty significant concerns raised from the neighbors. Have you had conversations with them about this new proposal?
So, since the last meeting, and we did, we did hear, obviously, the significant concern from neighbors in Abutters, and I've instructed my client, you know, as we do with most projects, when there's that level of concern to go out and try to have that outreach with those neighbors, he has tried to do that. Unfortunately, the level of resistance on having a conversation was pretty strong, and there's been multiple attempts to outreach to different, different neighbors in Abutters, who don't seem interested in having any type of development at this site, so we did make that effort.
Okay. Any questions before I open it up?
Is the electric pole in the way or the driveway?
We can jump, jump back to RJ O'Connell's plan. I don't believe it is. I believe the alignment would be, would allow for access into the site, and we asked O'Connell to go take a look at that.
I would just pass that.
Yep.
So, it's not, is...
No, it would be just a lot.
How far from the driveway will be?
I don't have the specifics, but I would read about it.
Where are the trash from 122? Is it today? Where is it? Where's the stories? Where?
Yeah, that's another part of this stuff.
So, with this proposal, we'll now...
Could you please introduce yourself?
Yeah, Richard Beliveau, Volney Capital, the owner of the property. This proposal will allow us to have better storage around the site, so now we'll be able to have trash storage around the rear. At the current state, there's a very steep driveway on the right-hand side, and there's really nowhere to properly keep the barrels, so the barrels are kept out front, but in this proposal, we'll now have, behind the property, be able to have trash storage and removal for both properties.
Is there a driveway, a dirt driveway right now for 122?
So, no, right now, there's just a small path that steps down on the vacant site, and on the right side, there's kind of a crumbling old stone driveway, but no one would park on it. It's, it's too steep.
How many apartments are in 122?
There's currently three apartments in that property that are all fully rented, and will, that will remain a rental property.
Who, who will be in charge for plowing that driveway if it is approved? Who will be in charge of plowing that driveway?
Yeah, so it would be a, a split agreement between the rental property and then the condos, is what we're proposing. So, we've dealt with this a lot. So, the condo association typically would, would hire the storm removal company, and then there'd be some type of invoice to the three-family, but it'd be a, working together on it.
Hugo, to address your concern relative to the electric pole, this plan shows the pole right here, and the driveway's starting over here.
Yeah, we, I think we had asked O'Connell to include that, so I dig that question that came up at the previous meeting as well.
Any other questions before I open it to the public?
The DPWs brought up the issue relative to the drainage plan. It says the piping appears to end possibly at a head wall with no call-out between the contours of 92 and 93. There's a 500-gallon dry well on the corner property with no pipe connection showing. So, what is the intent?
So, we'll take that feedback back to RJ O'Connell and ensure that it's properly updated.
Will you be able to have that for the Planning Board meeting in two weeks?
Yes.
Preferably in advance, so that I can get it up.
Yes.
Okay, as I said, I'm going to open this to the public. This is not, we will not be deciding this tonight. It will go in front of the Planning Board on the 27th and back here on July 11th. Is there anyone who wishes to speak on this matter? Please give your name and address, and please speak into the microphone.
Leo Robinson, City Councilor, also in Abutter. I'm not in favor of this proposal. When I refer back to what the chairperson referred to in the beginning, pursuant to Section 34A8, "No lot on which a building existing or erected shall be altered, and no structure shall be rearranged so as to create or increase nonconformance with this ordinance." This proposed development fails to meet the reference standards. If we look at the conditions in Section 34213C, I have concerns that it's not a unique parcel. There's concerns around the density. The neighbors do not want it. There was never a plan presented to the neighbors. We see no hardship in this matter, and we feel it's detrimental to the neighborhood, and they're looking for 10 variances and five special permits. So, that's, that's alarming and concern to the neighbors. The people on the back end who live on Prescott Ave, the Malloy's, are against the project. Louis Fabian, who's in the back, also is against the project, also sent some pictures connected to what it looks like in the back, and also Erin Griffin, who lives on Prescott, are all against the project. So, we just wanted to go on record in regards to our concerns and the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. And let me actually read. I have two, two emails that are relevant to this. One is, "Hello, my property, 70 Prescott Ave, is behind the prospective 122 Warren Ave build. Currently, my property experiences excessive water in the basement, and is due to the drainage during rainy and snowy weather coming downhill from Warren Ave. I'm concerned that the plans to store water in a holding tank and allowing it to drain over time will contribute to an increase in the water coming downhill into my property. I'm asking that this be considered when voting, as I am worried it may impact the foundation of my home. Respectfully, Erin Griffin." And we have another one from Christina and Peter Malloy, who are at 74 Prescott Avenue. "My husband and I are Chelsea resident homeowners at 74 Prescott Ave in Abutters to 122 Warren Ave. We will not be able to attend the hearing," this was for the original May 9th hearing, "but we are proposed to this proposal, opposed to this proposal. I would like my opposition to be known, since we not be able to attend the meeting in person." So, those are, and those are two of the people that you referenced, Councilor. Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter? Hi, introduce yourself, name and address, please.
Hi, good evening. My name is Kathleen Clark.
Talk into the microphone.
I live at 73 Warren Ave. I've lived on that street for 29 years, and that property has remained the way it is today. The only difference is, we now have an absentee owner who does not keep up with the property on the structure that's there. Interestingly, you asked him today, and I have a picture for you to witness about his trash. So, he is...
You can present that as part of the record if you'd like. You can present that as part of the record if you'd like.
So just to give you a little bit of history, this is the third house as soon as you enter Warren Ave. So just imagine, you're new on the street, you're pulling down, and this is what you see. This is the trash that we, as the owner occupied, that we keep up our property, have to view. Then, when he has his tenants pull in the barrels, you'll see the second picture. They don't even respectfully pick up the remaining trash that fell out of their barrels, and it sits there for days on end. This is weekly. Parking, you ask him about.
Okay, thank you. Wait, don't talk till you get in the microphone.
The tenants that park there, as you can see, are not even legally parked. Park on the sidewalk because they do not have a residence sticker to park on the street. It's interesting that one gentleman, who's also a resident and homeowner that's here on another project, requested and hopes that his neighborhood could be improved by one project. Well, we are requesting that our neighborhood not be further destroyed by the same absentee landlord who is the only one in our immediate area. So I ask that you please consider the residents who have established residency for 30-plus years, who remain there, present every day, spend money keeping up their property, unlike the petitioner. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this?
Hi, my name is Mike Tricia. I live at 63 Warren Avenue. I've been on that street for 35 years.
Get a little closer to the microphone, sir.
Been on the street for 35 years, and as somebody that lives across the street from a 40-unit apartment building, and the elevation has been addressed. We live on a hill. The right side of Warren Ave is sloped in the back. Out of the 40 units in that apartment building, half of them park on the street. There is no way that four additional parking spots and three for the new two units are going to fit through that driveway, go down the back and park in the back, especially when it snows. So those people who are going to move there, just like the tenants who are there now, are not going to park behind that building. No one's, because of the slope and elevation is a problem. It's been addressed by the developer. They're not going to park in the back. They're going to park on the street. Parking is a premium in the city, especially on Warren Avenue. So I'm against it. My neighbors are against it, and there's no hardship. I don't see this project going forward. This 122 was a three-family house that they basically want to do is build two condominiums in somebody's side yard. That was a yard. It's not a buildable lot. It was somebody's yard, and they want to build two condos in it. It's congested enough up there. They're going to get eight townhouses, but the new Soldier's Home development's going to go right up in that parking spot as soon as you make the descent down to Warren Ave. So it's congested enough. It's going to get more congested. I'm a no for this project, and I hope the planning board takes it under advisement. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this matter?
Hi, my name is William Clark. I live at 73 Warren Ave, I suppose. They talk about the parking lot in the back. If you go down to the property and you see how the slope goes down, and it goes around, when the winter comes and the plow comes down, where's he going to plow the snow? He's going to plow it over the wall into the next person's property? Also, I'm home every single day. I'm retired. I'm home every day. Nobody has ever come to my house and asked about anything about that property. And I'm there every single day. If I'm not sitting on my front step or I'm sitting in my garage, and nobody's come out. Also is the drainage. The drainage in there is, from what I understand, there's a spring underneath all our property. And when it rains really bad, if you drive up the street, you can see the water coming through the sidewalk because the spring fills up, and then there's no place for it to go but through the sidewalk and the street where it meets, all down the street. So what they're saying is they're going to put a 500-gallon tank or something there, but when they release that water, where's it going to go? It's going to go down the street into these other properties, and their basements are going to be flooded even more. I don't think he's worried about that. I think he's worried about how much money he can make, and that's happening everywhere, not just in Chelsea. It's everywhere. Also, to take care of like the trash and everything, if you go out there in the middle of the night, you will see the coyotes out there ruffling through the trash. Even if he puts the trash in the back, you think those people that live there are going to worry about the trash? Of course, they're not going to worry about it. All it's going to do is bring animals into rats, raccoons, coyotes. It's going to bring it into it. We have a fantastic neighborhood. We want to keep it that way. But it seems to me that the people that want to build, they're not worried about that. They're only worried about their pocket. Well, I'm worried about where I live. I have a family. We take very good care of our property. My neighbors, our property is, if you could drive down the street, you'll see that our property is so taken care of. This is not going to happen. Also, if you put a four-bedroom there, and I'm moving there, and I need someone to help me with the rent, oh, sorry, I rent one room to this kid, one, there's four cars. If there's four rooms and four grownups living there, everybody's going to have a car. So where are you going to put four cars from one apartment, four cars from another apartment, and you only got four parking spots? It's just, it's not a place to put that kind of a house there or anything. It's been like this for the longest time. The gentleman that owned the house before him was a police officer in Chelsea. He kept his fur impeccable. It was always well-maintained. Not anymore. Ever since this gentleman took over the property, it's a shithole. And I'm sorry to say that, but that's what it looks like. And I don't want to look at, when I invest the money that I do into my property, I don't want to look at that every single day. I'd rather just leave it there the way it is. It's nothing wrong with it. If you want to drive up the street and take a look, you'll see how nice the street looks. This is not going to be an improvement at all. It's just going to be, it's just going to look terrible. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this?
Hi, everyone. My name's Patricia O'Flaherty, and I reside at 87 Warren Ave. I'm a lifelong resident of Chelsea. And for the record, I join my neighbors in opposition to this proposal. Warren is zoned so as not to allow this type of development. Warren Ave has been and will continue to be, for the foreseeable future, a neighbor to the biggest redevelopment project in recent Chelsea history, which is the construction of the new Veterans Hospital and the additional development plan for the next few years. The 122 Warren proposal is adding congestion onto a site not zoned for this. I repeat, not zoned for this, and it's not a responsible proposal for this site. It will disrupt the water flow as we're above a spring here, which causes various issues like someone else also mentioned, when the water table rises. And there's also concern to the residents of Prescott Ave, which were brought up last time. And it's just bad behavior being allowed by developers who do not maintain the property and also had started work without permits when they first purchased the property, and the right to disrupt a neighborhood that is cohesive and filled with longtime residents of this city. The residents and the neighbors were in opposition before, and they continue to be, against this project. Any concerns by the developer were ones only temporary in nature, and that seems like what's happening once again. For these reasons and for the record, please add me, as well as many of our neighbors who are not here, in opposition to this proposal. It doesn't really make any sense when you think about it. If they have a property and they don't take care of it correctly, like the other neighbors say, it's inconceivable to me. In most cities and towns, they would look at the project that they have, I mean, the property, and they've been fined. There's all kinds of things, so you have to just take that in consideration. It's not just an output of like, oh, we don't want something. Listen, we grew up here in Chelsea. We all know. It can be loud. It can be noisy. It can be messy at times, but you know, you just have to do the right thing. And if you own property, you have to take care of it. That's the number-one rule. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak on this? This, again, will not be your only opportunity, so I'm not going to close the public portion of this hearing. We'll be back here on July 11, and it'll be in front of the planning board on the 27th of June. Thank you. I'm sorry, are you going? Did you have a question?
Yeah.
Sorry. Well, usually we do that before. Go ahead. Do you have a question?
Can you show us where you're going to put the trash on the new plans?
Oh, no, you need the microphone. Take the microphone with you.
Yeah, so we don't have a designated trash on this plan, but we can make sure we update that. But the plan would be, we'd be able to store the trash barrels behind each property instead of having to keep them up on the street side.
122, the basement is occupied?
So there's actually a...
No, 122, as of today, is occupied? Is rented?
So yeah, so currently, there's a unit on the first floor. There's a duplex on the second floor. There's a lower-level unit, and then there's actually another basement even below that because of the grade. So there's a basement, a lower-level unit, and then a single unit, and then a duplex unit.
Okay. What size will be the new lot?
7,600.
I'm sorry?
7,600.
Okay. Joan, can you go up on this presentation? I think I saw 6,000.
No, I saw 7,600. I saw something. It did say 7,600, that they wanted to split it at the beginning. It said 15,000 was the combined lot, and roughly 7,600, if I'm not mistaken, was the split lot.
The minimum in this area is 7,500.
Yeah, and then one note on the drainage. I know that that was one of the major concerns, and that's part of the reason why we took a break on this project, was to fully do the civil engineering and confirm that we could do the proper water storage. I know the concerns in the neighbors about water coming down the hill is 100%. I mean, that is a very steep drop, and that's part of all the work that we've done doing this whole civil plan is with these large Coltech tanks. They take in the water, and then they slowly release it out based on a 100-year storm. So these tanks are larger than you would see in a storm in 100 years to hold the water and then slowly release it. And so this will vastly improve the water concerns that we heard from the neighbors in their basements and all that in the rear properties. This will help that problem, not hurt it.
From this picture that the neighbor gave us, is it a, this is a mailbox? Another mailbox?
If you're going to answer the question, answer it with the microphone, please.
Yeah, I mean, I know a number of photos were provided. We haven't had a chance to view any of those.
Yeah, I guess that's fine.
Are we able to see those?
John will make copies for you.
I'll scan you a copy.
Yeah, copies would be great. Yeah, this is the entrance for the lower-level unit. And then, unit one on the first floor, and then there's a duplex on the top.
My question is, is that a mailbox sitting on the side there? That black one there? Is that a mailbox?
Yeah, this mailbox right here. Yeah, this mailbox is for this unit.
But in one picture, I saw another three mailboxes in the front door. So that would be four mailboxes.
I don't know how many mailboxes there are, but I think there's three.
Talk into the microphone, please.
Sorry, I can check on how many mailboxes there are, but there's three units in the property.
Question. Will these be rental or condo?
So the proposed two-unit is intended for homeownership, so those would be condos. The three-unit will remain a rental building.
I have a question. So, is it a buildable lot for such development?
The zoning issues here are not minimum lot area because they are meeting the minimum lot area. It is minimum frontage, side yard setbacks, open space, aggregate width of the side yards, and then there's some parking issues.
So that's why they're in front of us?
Right. So when...
That's why everybody who comes here is in front of us.
Right. So I'm only asking because it has come up with the Abuthers, and they are referring to sections in terms of zoning and regulations. I understand that. That's why they come before us for variances and special permits, but I just wanted to ask because that's what the Abuthers are referring back to in terms of zoning regulations in that area to protect such development.
This is a residential one district, which is the city's most restrictive zoning district. It only allows one- and two-family development, and that's it, other than some like nursing homes and stuff like that. In this case, a 7,500-square-foot lot is required for either a one or a two, but the frontage requires 60 feet, and these parcels only have 49 and 50 feet respectively. And then, side yard setbacks will be based on the height of the structure, so quarter of the height of the structure.
And through the chair, so conforming use at two-family, so it is allowed use in the district, and at least 7,500 square feet, which we have 7,600. So it does beat the minimum lot size and the use that's proposed. And I would just like, Madam Chair, if I may, just to address, we did hear, in addition to drainage, parking is being a concern, and I know Mrs. DePries indicated there were some parking issues, but we are proposing four spaces for the two units on the lot with the proposed two-family. The code requires two spaces per unit, and I understand, you know, not withstanding speculation that, you know, if you have X number of bedrooms, that there may be more cars. The zoning code says two. We're complying with what the zoning code requires. But I think more significantly, we should also point out that we're adding three parking spaces on the existing lot, which don't exist presently. So the concerns that we did hear, you know, that tenants are parking on the side, we're not disputing that may be an issue or a problem, but there's no ability to park on the site presently because of the slope and the way it's oriented. We would be improving that condition and allowing for parking not associated with the two-family, but with the three-family on the three-family lot. So each of those units would then have a parking space available to them off the street, and that requires, again, a significant improvement to the site, which is something that we're proposing in connection with this development.
Yeah, and one concern was regarding the cars not being able to get back in there, and that was one thing we spent a lot of time with the civil engineer on, was what the proper grading was per the code so that we could lay out the parking spaces in a way so that it wouldn't be too steep of a driveway. So what you see here is, we brought the parking forward, and then we have the double retaining walls in the back. We pulled them off the rear property line from what they were before when it was seven long, and so now we were able to bring it up to a grade where it's a gradual slope down, which will be great for the current tenants to be able to park and not park on the street, and then the new owners will have two spots per unit.
Thank you.
Just for the record, so there are four mailboxes. Yes? There are four mailboxes on 122.
You want to make sure there's not four houses, more, four units?
No, no, no. I want to make sure if there's four mailboxes. That's what it shows on the picture.
We don't know. He's showing a pic. I don't know where the picture was taken. I don't know anything about it. We've seen the picture the first time.
Why don't you guys, for the purposes of this, confirm, please confirm for Mr. Perdomo that there are the number of mailboxes.
There could be 12 mailboxes. I think the issue is, it's three residential units. There's no, the property's not in violation, from what I understand, Mrs. DePries is having any open code issues for illegal units or anything of the sort, correct?
To the best of my knowledge. I haven't spoken with the code.
So I'll swing by and look. I believe the first-floor unit put up, the tenant had two mailboxes. Then the upstairs unit has one, and then there's the one for the rear unit. But they're side by side. I believe they're both for that unit, but I can check and get back to you for next meeting.
Yeah, we just want to make sure if there's four or three mailboxes. It does all.
I can remove one. If you want it off, it's gone.
No, no, no. That's only my question. So it'd be on the record. There's four mailboxes. It does all.
Okay, yeah, but we can have that removed if that's important to you guys.
I assume someone's using it if it's there, right?
Yeah, I think that maybe they get a lot of mail, and they needed two mailboxes, more space, but I'm not sure. I'd have to ask them.
Okay.
Any other questions for now?
Just a suggestion in terms of what the Abuthers are concerned about, because I feel like this has been up before us over and over again. And just to encourage you probably coming back to us to at least try to get some headway in terms of, you know, being established in the neighborhood and working with the neighbors.
Absolutely.
Yeah, and addressing the issues that they brought before today, the trash issue.
Yep.
Okay, next month.
Thank you very much.
Two weeks, zoning planning board, next month back here.
Have a good evening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next case is also yours, Arthur. 22, 20, 23, 11, 125 Vas Street. Thank you. Joe and I will not be voting on this one either.
Okay, the next case is 125 Vas Street, Stella Lewis.
We're going to take a, we're going to take a short break. We'll be back. We're going to take a, we'll be back at 8 o'clock. Five-minute break. We'll be back, we're gonna take a, we'll be back at eight o'clock, five-minute break. Oh, she grabbed a yellow stuffer, like a yellow mod. Cast those on. Joe, all right, we're ready, um, we're, we're gonna reconvene our meeting now. We're reconvening, we are here, it's, um- Okay, Arthur, it's all you. He's coming. It's Arthur's turn.
Okay, well, um, next case is one twenty-five Ash Street, Stella Lewis.
Good evening, everyone. If you recall, this is the situation where-
Into the microphone, David.
Ricky'll yell at me if I mess it up again. So, with me is Elaine Chetopoulos, who is Stella Lewis's daughter.
Excuse me, Counselor, if you could speak into the-
Oh, that close, okay. So Elaine Chetopoulos is with me, she's Stella Lewis's daughter. Unfortunately, Ms. Lewis is elderly, infirmed, and in a nursing home, but Elaine is here pursuant to a durable power of attorney. So this is the situation where there was a rat pop problem in the yard, uh, abutting one twenty-five Ash Street, and Ms. Chetopoulos went ahead and paved the border around the fence that was previously dirt where the rats were coming in, um, then found out afterwards that she needed a permit to do that. So she's trying to make the best of an uncomfortable situation, um, leave, to leave the paving there, put in six marked parking spaces, which is what's required for the three-family building at one twenty-five Ash Street. There's some parking relief required because the spaces would be eight-and-a-half feet wide, not nine feet wide, and the aisle would be approximately seventeen feet, not twenty-four feet. The other compromise is that, um, it co, it significantly compromises the open space. But it's one or the other, really, in that area. Uh, most of the neighbors have done the same thing, they've paved the yards, they've paved the area, it's, they've found it's the only way to get rid of the rat problem. And that's where we are today, if anyone has any questions.
This is a public meeting, does anybody from the public have a, any questions or concerns? Okay, I will close the public portion of the meeting, John? John, does the, just the conditions?
The special, the planning board recommends its approval with standing conditions as applicable. Uh, curbing to identify those areas where parking is not permitted, meaning five feet from the side lot line and not within the front yard setback, and tenants of the building will be ineligible to participate in the city's resident sticker parking program.
Okay, Dave? Is that okay?
Yes.
The conditions, does the-
Absolutely.
Yeah, does the, um, board have any questions?
Yeah, we're just gonna put something on the, um, against that fence, so no one will park there on the, uh, kind of front of the-
I'm sorry, I can't.
Um, I don't remember correctly, but if we did ask you for, um, what was gonna happen to that openness space against the fence? So no one will park overnight in that area as a, as an opening?
Well, it's all on the plan, as far as what the setbacks will be once this is marked for the parking spaces. It's already been done. This was the problem, is that Ms. Chetopoulos did not know she needed a permit to just pave that area. There were no changes to the actual area, there were no structures built, it was just paving what used to be a dirt area that was part of that lot. The property is made up of three lots that are, I think, fourteen-hundred-fifty square feet each. The house sits on one, the other two always made up the yard. And the area around the perimeter was not paved, but that's where the rats were coming in, and it was just an untenable situation. So this seems to be a reasonable, unfortunately, compromise. It takes cars off the street, and there's really no parking in that area anyway, so it takes cars off other streets. It cleans up the area and it gets rid of the rats, they can't come through under the paved area, under the fence.
Uh, at the, at the planning board meeting, you talked about using railroad ties as curbing to, um, isolate the areas where they can't park, and that's, that's the condition that I referenced.
Correct.
Yep.
Yeah, some sort of barrier to make sure the cars don't back into the, the setback areas. So that can certainly be done, probably to everyone's benefit at that point, at this point.
Does it, they're gonna have lighting, light? No, yeah?
You, you need to introduce yourself and speak in the microphone.
Elaine Chetopoulos. Yes, there is lighting in the backyard. It's a censored one, so when people come in, it automatically goes on.
Any other questions?
And you're, you're not having rodent issues anymore?
It's, no, thank God.
Okay, okay. You have signage, and the people that park there are only the residents of the building that park there?
Yes, only the residents.
It's assigned parking, or?
Yes.
I'll set. Is there a motion?
You have the, the, don't you have a variance?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. I try to avoid this honestly, I, I don't like this part of it. Uh, David, can you go through the variables, please?
The four questions, as we call them.
Can you do that?
Yes. So, um, starting with the soil conditions, topography, et cetera, um, the soil conditions themselves were leading to the rat problem, so that's been solved by the paving issue. Um, also, there's really, there's no other land available to provide for open space and parking, so on balance, it just seemed that the parking was the best way to go in this case. Also, if you look at the neighboring lots, we provided some pictures, um, the neighbors have pretty much done the same thing, and they use the lot, paved or not, as open space. It just seems to balance, again, the competing needs of, of the tenants in the area.
Does the board agree with that, that explanation?
Yes.
Okay, next one?
So the literal, literal enforcement of the ordinance prevents the petitioners from util, petitioner from using the vacant land because of the rat issue. It was totally uninhabitable at that point, and granting the variance, uh, for the open space and special permit for parking will maximize the use of the lots.
The board agree with that? Okay. Uh, desirable leave may be granted without substantial detriment to the public good.
Um, there's no detriment to the public good because, again, cars are taken off adjoining streets, not even Ash Street, per se, but cars are taken off the streets, and the rodent problem is significantly abated in, in that area on the petitioner's property.
Yes.
Yes. All right, desirable leave may be granted without nullifying or substantially derogating from the intent or purpose of this chapter.
Okay, and again, um, as I said, the open space, while it's reduced or almost eliminated, the neighbors have found a way to, to, um, work around that. Uh, there are pictures with the petition of neighbors having parties and whatever in the areas, and it's just what the neighborhood is. Um, the, also, the only other abutting property there is Rent-A-Center, and I believe we presented a picture also that just shows a trash-screwed lot on the other side of, um, petitioner's fence. So this use of the property is an improvement in every way over what it was and, and what's next to it.
Okay. All right, there are any other questions? All right, is there a motion on the board, on the board?
Make a motion. To approve case twenty-two-three-dash-eleven, one twenty-five Ash Street, for special permit variances seeking approval to extend, uh, driveway to the rear right side of property line for the special conditions or stander conditions?
The condition is delineated earlier.
All those in favor?
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next one is twenty-two-three-dash-twelve, fifty-one Library Street, Pedro Florentino. A pub, um, this is a special permit and variance seeking approval for the demolition of a garage structure in a residential structure and the construction of a four-unit dwelling structure, which does not meet the City of Chelsea zoning ordinance for minimum side yard setback, front yard setback, lot size rear yard setback, and combined side yard setback, maximum floor area ratio, and lot coverage. And again, this is the first time we'll be hearing this, so will we not be deciding this today? This will go to the planning board on the twenty-seventh of June and back here on the eleventh of July. Mr. Midland, your answer is-
Hey, good evening again, everyone, David Midland, representing Pedro Florentino, who is the petitioner. And also with us is Beth McDougal, the architect on this project. So you may remember, we were before you about a year ago, and the proposal at that time was for a five-unit building at fifty-one Library. Currently, fifty-one Library is, uh, a bunch of old rundown garages and a single-family brick, looks like a warehouse, but it's actually a si, a single-unit building. Yeah, these are the current, the current state. The garages are off, off to the left, and the residences to the right. Over the past year or so, Ms. McDougal and Mr. Florentino have worked very hard to try to address the board's concern that the five-unit building was just too big for the lot. I'll turn it over to Beth, because she can describe the project, but I, you know, my, my feeling is it's very creative. It's a creative way to use the space, to maximize it, to use various, um, indentations and setbacks in the building itself so that it doesn't loom over the neighbors, that was a concern also. And that's basically it, Beth, do you want to take over?
Hi, uh, I'm Beth McDougal, the architect. So, we took the, um, it's kind of flipped, but we took the drawings and we, um-
Ma'am, could you please just hold it just a little closer to the mouth, just-
Okay, and we reduced it to four units. On the ground level, we have all of the parking, um, required six, we have seven parking spaces with stairs that go upstairs and an elevator to a unit for handicapped accessibility. Can you go to the next, uh, plan? Okay. Is there a way to flip it?
I can't, I can't flip it. I'm sorry, I can't flip it.
You can't?
No. I, we're not paying for the free day, free trial.
Tools? Right here? Where's the, oh.
Nope.
I gotcha, you're just reading it, you don't have the Adobe, um, okay, Acrobat, all right, go back, please.
Gotta find it again, sorry.
Okay.
Petition.
Okay, so on the first floor, this is the front of the building, so just kind of tilt your head. So on the first floor, there are two units, there's, um, two, two-bedroom units. Um, this is our handicapped accessible unit, and, um, we've, we've have it set up so that someone can purchase it and live there with, you know, who's handicapped, in a wheelchair. There's also other, um, opportunities, so the entrance is- a wheelchair. Um, there's also other, um, opportunities. So the entrance is, you come in downstairs, and you, you come up the stairs, you land here, this is the stairwell, and you've got a very short, um, hallway. You can go into, this is unit two, and we call this unit one, or you can go upstairs, um, to the other two units. If you go to the next page. So the upper unit, those are townhouses. So we have, you come up the stairs, right? You come in this door to this unit, or you come in this door to this unit. Now, I'm sorry, let me back up. You come up here, and you go into this door and this door for the units. So on this level right here, which is the third, third floor, um, so you have ground, um, which is the parking, so let's just call that one. Then second floor has the two two bedrooms with the handicapped accessibility. The third floor has all the living spaces, kitchens, dining areas, living space. And then if you go to the next level, we have two bedrooms and two baths. So these units are townhouses. They have two bedrooms, two and a half baths. There's a powder room on the living area floor, um, a little seating area. And what I've done with all of the outdoor spaces is I've, each person has a, has, um, outdoor space, decks, but they're not stacked on each other. So no one has drippy head, you know, gets dripped on their head or anything. If you can go to the elevation...
Unfortunately, unfortunately, I can't flip it.
We, it's all right, we can turn our heads.
Well... No, they, he's, it's just the reader. Hold on. Look at you.
Perfect. One, two more. Two more.
Thank you.
Thank you, Hector.
We'd, we'd be lost without him.
All right. So if we, if we look at the, the front, the sides, and the rear, all have different, um, small outdoor spaces for each unit. So if you're looking at this unit, it'll have a small outdoor space here. The townhouse units have a small outdoor space on the front. So as you go along, um, none of the decks, like I say, none of the decks are on top of each other. The building steps back on the sides, it also steps back on the front, it steps back from here to here. So this is the widest part, because we need it for the parking. I mean, we looked at it, having it all open with all the parking and all the cars there. It's just not as finished, it doesn't look as nice. So we'd like to keep this enclosed with the garage in and out, um, doors that get into the garage if you're walking. And then this one right here goes in the stairs that go up, and this one right here gets you in the, uh, parking garage. Go to the next one? This is the side, so, uh, um...
Rear.
This is the back. So if you, if you're looking at the rear, so this unit here, which is a townhouse, it has a small area here. This unit on this side, which is a townhouse, has this unit here. The unit that's, this one, is it, which is the handicap unit, has a small space here. This one, which is not the handicap unit, it has a space on the front. So if you go to the next elevation... So this is our left side. So here is the space, um, also for this handicap unit, which we have a door, you can come out. Um, townhouse has a small space here. Townhouse has a small space here. Go to the next elevation?
This is the townhouses, each of the townhouses has two spaces for, or is it, am I just...
Right. So up where the, the primary bedroom is, they have a little tiny one.
Mm-hmm.
And then, um, this side, this one has, has a little bit longer one. And then this is the non-handicap unit, and that would have a, a small space here. So I'm trying to give everyone outdoor spaces, but not so that you're on top of each other. Um, I'm trying not to have them look down. This one would see down if they're standing right here, but I'm trying to give everyone as much privacy as possible with the outdoor spaces. Um, if you keep going, we'll get to the renderings, maybe?
That's it as far as the plans?
Do you have the renderings? Oh, they're before the plans? Okay. Oh, but they're in black?
I don't have any, I don't know.
They're not in color?
You're looking for floor?
I know it's...
They're the rendering, she said.
Here, let me, um, I have... Yeah, they're in color. Okay, so let me give you, I can, I can show you. All right. So this is, this is in color. We've rendered it a couple different ways, if you can hear me. Um, so we did it, we kept, we kept the existing, I'll call it in pencil form, right? And then we put our building in pencil form. We also did... Like a daytime, but we rendered it. And these are just off of our printer at work, so they, they're coming out darker than what they should. The grays aren't nearly as dark. And then that's like a nighttime one. But the one to really look at... Is this one, which is in pencil form. So if you can see, um, how this, this steps back here, comes up, the front steps back, um, this is stepped back, this steps back, this steps back. So I've got it so that the building gets smaller as it goes up.
Looks like the Empire State Building.
It, it, it crenelates up, front, back, and all sides, so that we don't have a box, like we see, um, some of the buildings, and that it has some interest to it, and everyone has as much private outdoor space as possible. You know, up here, which is off the primary bedroom, and then you've got this door right here, actually, which has a Juliet balcony, that's actually in the stairwell that goes up to the units. So these guys here also have a Juliet balcony, but that's the living space. That particular piece right there is not living. So we've tried to create it so that it's not, um, one of the comments we heard before when we had, well, eight units, that it was a very large building.
If you want to see pictures, you can ask. You want to see them?
Do you want, do you guys need more? I have this.
No, I think gentleman over there looked like he wanted to see it. What could, Joan, could you, okay, there you go.
Of course he does. Um, so we've addressed a bunch of the issues that you've asked for with regards to building mass and number of units. We have four units. All of them are two bedrooms. Um, we have seven parking spaces, um, and that is the widest piece of the, that's what set, that's what puts us over on the side yards, because we need it for the cars to turn around and park. Um, and, but everything else up, up top, if you go to the next floor... So this is how much it steps in. It steps in about, it steps in ten feet. So what's nice is, y- you can see, there's roof down below, this is a small area, this is a small area for this unit with, which is the handicap unit. This unit here has a small deck here. We didn't put any extras on the back. We're trying to give everybody, you know, enough space to move around. If you go to the next, um, floor, please?
Do you want the next one down?
Back one, up one more? Thank you. So this unit right here, it says deck below, but it's the roof, because no one has access to that. You've got, um, this is the deck below, roof below, this is their area, and this is their area, and this is down below. So we've just tried to, um, create the spaces, like I said before, um, some private spaces for each person, so. Uh, if you have any questions?
This is just a general question.
Sure.
With regards to, but since you're an architect, uh, the windows seem to be narrower, but higher.
Mm-hmm.
Is that a common thing nowadays?
So the windows still have to be, um, egressable, you know, for egress.
Right.
So what we try to do is to get more light in, and it's a little bit, it's not completely modern, we've taken that away, but cut, sort of updated it, that they're, um, they're taller, so you can get more light. Because we're trying to get as much light in the units as possible.
No, I, I just noticed that on a couple of the other applicants, too, and I was just curious. Thank you.
No, it kind of depends upon where the building is and where it's built. I mean, we do traditional all the time, like this, but we also do, you know, each, each project's different for each client.
Any other questions before I open it up?
Are you putting an elevator?
There's an el, there's an elevator to the one unit for the handicapped, um, accessibility, yes.
Um, where do you guys put in the trash?
The trash? If you go back to the, uh, where the cars are, trash is inside. So we have, um, we have space right here is where we were going to put the trash, just line up the trash cans. Because this here, see right here, this is where you can come in from outside. This, we need a sprinkler room. This would be the elevator. This is the door to come in, you know, for the cars. And then this is where, I'll hop over here. This is where you go up to your unit, unless you're in the handicap unit. And we left this space right here intentionally to put the trash cans. Inside, though. Not outside.
The back door, who will have access? Is it just for emergency, or?
It's just for emergency, yeah. Yeah. I mean, we could plant some stuff back here, but I don't, I, you know, we, we've done things like that before, no one ever uses it. So we figured we would, we'd pave it, put some basic grass. I mean, we could put some hedges and stuff, which I think would be nice, but people really don't use it. It's, it's just more of like a condo association thing, we'd keep it looking nice.
So just out of curiosity, you said the top two units are, um, called townhouses. What do you call the bottom two units? Are those just condominiums, or?
Flats.
Flats.
But they're all condos. But they're, you know, it's just flats, so that, you know, you're living on one floor, and then if you're living on two floors, um, I call it a townhouse. Duplex.
Okay.
But that's a Florida term, duplex. Right, right. So.
John?
Yeah, I question the usability of this space here, because when you pull in, you can't back out without hitting the wall. You need five feet in order to turn the car and pull out. And the aisle is not wi- uh, wide enough in order to give you that room to do it.
I mean, we could, we can pull this up. Um, I mean, we could bring it all the way across. What I'm trying to do is to, you know, be mindful of the property lines as much as possible, but...
Why not flip it? Why not move, put the garbage cans in the back and move?
You mean outside?
Yeah. I mean, no, I mean, is that already built? Is that other, because you could move one car, move those da, up further, move that car, the car that can't turn, oh, then you got the same problem with that car, never mind. Yeah, you just create the same problem.
You, I could bring this down.
Yeah, but, yeah, but just, you just...
And then, you mean, bring that straight across, and then?
Yeah, but then I just create the problem on the other side. That's all, that's all I'm saying, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we can, we can always extend this, it's just, um...
It's gonna hit a car.
I'd have to look at what happens up above it. Yeah, it could.
It won't, it won't, it won't have the width to do that. It won't, it'll just have this width.
Right.
So it won't have the width to pull into a space there and then pull out.
Right. Or we could...
Don't, if you're gonna, wait a minute, sir, sir, you, you, oh, you get it, identify yourself and talk on the, use the microphone.
Pedro Florentino, the owner, requested here. The other thing I was going to mention, Beth, is I believe there's space in the back. There's plenty of space in the back with barrels.
There is space in the back, yeah. Yeah, because the property lines up here somewhere. So there is space. I mean, I could, we, we could definitely could do that. We're just really tight on this little piece right here. Um, but that could come out, and we could just have our egress door here, or we can shift things down. I mean, there's, we can make that seventh car work if we need to.
Are there any questions, John?
No, that's it.
Okay, um, again, this is still, oh, of course.
So there's only one set of stairs? There's only one set in the front? There's nothing in the back? There's no form of, like, entry?
It's one set.
So there's no exit, other than the one in the garage?
Because the building's all sprinkled.
Yep.
The code allows us to have one means of egress.
Okay.
Because it doesn't meet the, it meets the criteria of the exceptions. I know I had a conversation with Mike McEachire this morning about that.
Mm-hmm.
He said he hates it, but he knows its code, so.
Yeah.
But the, the building is sprinkled, so it, it's allowed. It's a small, on the smaller side for, for egress, and there's not that many people. When you calculate out the numbers, um, on square footage and everything, it meets the requirements for the one means of egress.
Okay.
And, but then all bedrooms have to be egressable also. You know, the size of the windows and stuff. Yeah.
Anything else before I open it up?
Okay, is there anybody here who wishes to speak on this? Okay, this will not be your only opportunity. I'm going to keep the public portion open. Twenty-seventh, Planning Board, eleventh here.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you. The next one is three, three oh five Eastern, two, case twenty-two-three-fourteen, three oh five Eastern Ave. Uh, special permit seeking approval for parking lot for the parking and repair and storage of electric vehicles which require a special permit. I have a feeling we've heard this before. Um, but who's here for this? Is, is there anyone here on this? Uh, back to Anthony. Okay. So again, this is, um, the first we're hearing of this, and so it will be going to the Planning Board on the twenty-seventh. Fill us in, I feel like I know, I feel like I know lots about Eastern, three oh five Eastern Ave. Talked about this a lot.
Yes.
Wait for John to get back, hold on, just wait for John.
Wait for John? While we're waiting, can I just pass this up to the?
Of course. Thank you.
I'm, no, I believe I do, and, uh, Rick, Rick emailed me one, but let me make sure I have.
Madam Chuen, if I may proceed, uh...
I swear, I caught him over.
For the record, Anthony Rossi, behalf of the petitioner, I do have, uh, Rick Savile from Engineering Alliance, and I do have, uh, but the applicant who's not the current owner, but is hoping to be the current owner, um, based on, um, this application that's being presented before this board. Um, I'm not sure if this board is familiar with three hundred and five Eastern Ave, but that's, um, a site. Is there an existing conditions, John, with us, uh, showing the actual site? It's right where the, uh, the railroad is on Eastern Ave. It's sort of set back, it's pretty rundown, and there's a building all the way recessed in the back. It's a pretty rundown building. Um, we met, um, on multiple meetings with the city regarding redeveloping the site, uh, with my client, redeveloping it. The current owner of the property occupies this existing building that you see here. So the actual plan that you see before you today is not what the building looks like. It's pretty disastrous building. Um, and I think John could probably attest to that, too. Um, and my client's looking to redevelop the property as a whole. Um, the, the owner, part of the deal is the owner, I think, is cast to vacate by the end of June of next year, and he occupies the whole entire building. Uh, my client is looking to, uh, take this building. He, he currently owns a site that Rivian is a tenant in, um, on Griffin Way, and Rivian's looking to expand, um, their use in operations, and they're looking to be on this site. Um, this is why there's a hundred and forty, a hundred and twenty storage of electric vehicles here. There's also additional forty-five parking spaces along here, plus two additional handicap spaces, and that's to service the actual building itself. Uh, the goal here, short term, is to have Rivian occupy, uh, the site if this gets approved, on the condition, too, that when these landlord does vacate at the end of June, that this building will be actually redone. Exterior, windows, brick, um, and all that can be talked through Planning Board, what we're going to the extent of it, but we gave you a pretty good rendering of what we're talking about with the building. You really can't see it from the street, because the way it's angled, and this is why we did a pretty extensive landscape of buffer also, and we did a lighting plan going up and a pathway to get to the back of the building. Uh, nevertheless, is, we left this portion of the site, which is a pretty decent area, as a potential future development site, um, down the road. The city did rezone this whole entire area, so we're hoping that down the road, there might be a use for that, to put a structure on that site. Um, and this is not a long-term plan, this is something short-term, uh, that we can hope to redevelop down the road. Um, Rivian e- expects to take a portion of this building, um, and Rivian did sign a, a conditional lease, if they do acquire this property, correct, Manny? It's contingent on this, and they expect about at least up to ten employees, and from what I was told on their other site, most of the people they do hire, because it's in Chelsea, they try to bring Chelsea, uh, people to have a preference on it, um, on it, and that's just a portion of the building. When these tenants can now redo the whole building, we're supposed to, you know, we're potentially getting a lot more uses that are probably even more desirable than the current zoning. But in this day and age, in this current world we live in, it's very difficult to occupy these type of buildings as a result of that. Um, but this could have, you know, potential... But this could have, you know, potential multiple users on the existing building down the road. And this site could be redeveloped in a different manner down the road. So we worked with the city on something that made sense in the short term, and also gave the potential of developing the building with other uses down the road, still with extensive parking set aside for the building, and still to occupy a problem that Rivian is having about storing their vehicles, and also do repair these locations. And to talk a little bit about what Rivian does is because these vehicles, electric vehicles, and it's electric storage, repairs are not oil changes, mechanical, what have not, because there isn't any engine, essentially a battery. But one of the problems with, with, you know, electric vehicle users is technology, understanding how the vehicle runs, works, the computers, and they basically, and the biggest repairs they're having is because of lack of knowledge how to use these. So in this location, they would have an office, extensive office, they would meet with people. Everything's bought online, everything is purchased online, there's no sales at this location or any other location. Just like Tesla, everything's online. It's more that they can educate their buyers who've already purchased vehicles. So for service-wise down the road, there isn't as much repairs, what have not, and train. And also, it's another repair site that they could have in another location and hire more people, and also have a portion to store their new vehicle. So again, as far as visibility from the street, you're not gonna have a hundred and twenty rundown vehicles like a, these are gonna be brand-new vehicles, and also recessed in the back with a landscaping buffer in the front. So that's essentially what's here, and it's done in two phases. One for current use, and two for potential multiple users down the road, and still have that setup on the site with a future plan that's more cognizant to what the city's looking for with the updated zoning in that district.
John, what's the planning department's take on this, given the different iterations we've seen of this?
As Counselor indicated, he worked with me and with Kyle Allen, our economic development planner, to come up with this proposal, and it's something that we feel comfortable with over, over the next five years or so.
Joe?
Are they gonna be both car and truck, or just cars?
So they don't have, I'm sorry, as of right now, Rivian does two types of trucks. They don't have like essential, like, regular vehicles. One's SUV, it's a third, three-row SUV, and other ones like a pickup truck. So it, I mean, really high-end pickup trucks and really high-end SUVs. But now with today's price cutting, because of competitiveness there, originally this vehicle is a very highly-priced vehicle, because the cost to make them was actually far more than it cost them to sell them, because they couldn't build enough, they couldn't make enough to deal with the supply. I think right now they've only made twenty-five thousand in a given year, and they have demands of hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of thousands. So the problem is, is they have a plant that's so big, but with the parts and the labor force, they can't manufacture enough to deal with the supply. So right now, they only have two types of vehicles. It's a high-end, like, pickup truck, and.
Is it Rivian?
Rivian, correct. And the other one's a luxury SUV. But I, there was told they're supposed to be coming to a more economical vehicle now in the works, but.
Well, it depends on what's inside the vehicle.
Correct.
If they got an excellent product.
Correct. I mean, I can attest that I have both of them, and I sold all my other cars. That's how great the vehicles are. So as far as you can Google them online, the ratings are incredible, but you just can't get them, you know? And one of the biggest things, the problem, is transportation and, and storage, and that's one of the reasons why they're looking for an alternate site, and they, and they want to invest into Chelsea. And by allowing this use here to happen, it allows the buyers who, you know, paying this enormous amount of money to buy this piece of land, to redevelop the building and other uses on the road by having them there in the short run. And it could be more in the long run, it matters what comes before the city. And we also told the city, as we're telling this board, if other users are looking to come to the city, let us know, because we want to bring them into this site. Thank you.
Any other questions before I open it up?
Is the driveway the same as the two ninety-five? Two ninety-five use that driveway?
I'm sorry.
Two ninety-five Easter use the same driveway as that?
No, no.
They had different.
Yeah, they're, this is, this is a separate access. I think the abutting property does have an easement for emergency purposes to come through here, Hugo? And cross over for an easement, but that's only for emergency access, it's a gate there, that's it.
How are you bringing the cars in?
Oh, can you, can you get, get a, get the microphone?
Yeah.
My name's Monte Farahani, I'm manager at three oh five Eastern Ave. So they, they're gonna come through the access street, Eastern Ave, and they'll enter through here, through this path over here, and they'll park, store the cars here, and there is a driving bay.
But will be trucks bringing the cars in?
I'm sorry?
Will be trucks bringing the cars in?
Inside the building?
Will be, who's gonna bring the car, the trucks?
Oh, no, the employees.
You can't.
Yeah, but I think what he means is, is it gonna be the carrier that has one, two, three, four, five, six?
Yes, so, yes, they come in, I've seen them, so they come in those big trucks, they're like seven or eight vehicles at a time, and then they'll, they'll, but a lot of times, actually, they take them from the pier, and they actually even drive them over, because they come in so many at a given time, and they store it. That's what happened in Chelsea, on the other location.
So, and this will be twenty-four hours, or just during the day?
No, this is during the day.
How many employees will be working?
Up to ten.
Ten. What transactions, what will be going in the building?
So right now, you guys said they're only taking a small portion of the building, and that will be when the tenant, the landlord vacates, end of June of next year. And then the rest of the building's gonna have to get renovated as a whole, exterior and interior. John's been inside the building, he tells you it's pretty much full to the, to the top of huge machinery and so forth, and it's gonna be all renovated for future other development use, which is why we have forty-five parking spaces for the whole, for the building as a whole. So Rivian might only use seven or eight spots, and they could still use their hundred and twenty in storage for theirs, and the rest of it's gonna be left ready for other users to come on this site to use the building.
Okay, so the, the, those ten employees, they're gonna be there during the day?
Correct.
They're gonna use the same parking spaces, those a hundred and twenty spaces?
No.
They will have designated?
There's forty-five spots on, separate for the one twenty. So if you look over here, these are all parking spots. All these are parking spots.
Oh, the, oh, okay.
So, so what I'm saying is, the employees are only gonna be there during the day. Then it's gonna be closed off, gate, night, security, lit, lighting plan. Next time we come before the board, you'll see a landscaping, a lighted plan, security, everything, because we don't want anybody to vandalize, take the vehicles, what have not. But the employees will park in a portion of the forty-five spots, and the rest of the spots are being available for future tenants that are gonna be going in this renovated building for other uses down the road. So the goal is to get that, and then if one of those tenants is looking for a structure or a building, even more than what's in the building as a whole, because it's a pretty good-sized building, that's why we had this other development site here, which is a pretty good size site, it's just because it's a large site, for a future building to be placed on it if needed. For now, when we, when we spoke to the city, they'd rather have that as green space, landscaping, trees, shrubs, because that's the only thing you see from the street at that angle. So that's why it's not paved like the rest of the site, it's because it creates a landscape buffer, because if you're driving down Eastern Ave, that's all you'll see. And it creates a buffer from the vehicles and everything. But we're hoping down the road, when the building's done over, that other users that want to come, if they need more than ten thousand square feet in the building for their use, it could be another development site on that. So we sort of set it apart as multiple sites, which is why this was for a period of time, for the current proposed use.
Okay, if you have, let's say like twenty-five cars, new cars you're gonna bring in at once, right?
Yep.
So the guys are gonna bring those cars, will be what, twenty-five guys, or will be five at a time?
No, no.
How'd that work?
So Hugo, when they come with the trucks, and they have it in the other site, the one truck will come over and just unload it in the spots, and the truck leaves. The employees aren't really dealing for the storage of the vehicles. The, the, that's one part of the, the application. It's mostly for the repair and service and training of people who purchase vehicles already, who need to service and repair the vehicles that they service, and train for those vehicles and pick up those vehicles. That's separate, that's what the Rivian office and repair is gonna be. This is the storage of the vehicles. That really won't have other employees, other than someone coming in with a slip and say, we dropped off twenty vehicles today, fifteen vehicles today. You're not gonna see a hundred and twenty vehicles being dropped off in one day. They can't even build that many vehicles in that, so they, they come off a boat and they drop them off, and they leave them there. That's it. If that, hopefully that, if I understood what you're saying, that's, thank you.
So, so what's the rotation once they're dropped off, or how, how long do they stay there?
They'll, they stay there until like someone's vehicle is.
Someone buys it.
Well, the vehicles.
Or close to a dealership.
So right, right now, everything is done online, just like Tesla's no dealerships, they just deliver the vehicles. So as soon as the vehicles, these vehicles, there's a waiting list for two years, so. So those vehicles are sold before they get there, is that you just need a place to drop them off, so the vehicles can be registered, insured, and then it's ready for a person.
And would somebody pick it up there, if somebody who bought it, pick it up at that site? Or would some, or would they go, how, how does the owner get it?
So the owner gets it, it can be delivered to the owner, they can, if they want to get trained in how to operate the vehicle, they can come there, they give them free training to teach them how to operate the vehicle in the repair training side, many ways. For now, they're just there for storage, and they usually get removed pretty quickly, because there's a waiting list for them. So once they come there, they get down, but they're not gonna have a hundred and twenty cars a day there, because they're only making, don't listen to me, you can go online, they're making like twenty-five thousand a year throughout the whole country. So it, it's really there because they have no place to put them, you know, and they need to store them somewhere for people that are coming to Massachusetts who already purchased the vehicles. Maybe they want to get trained, you know, and so forth, and they know where the service area is. So it's more that now they already have a Chelsea location, they sort of want to keep Chelsea as their major hub for Rivian.
Okay, I have a couple more questions.
So the entrance is over here, so will they be exiting from the same entrance? Or will they be, or will they be exiting from the other entrance?
No, they'll be exiting here.
Okay.
So if you look, it's two ways, it's a pretty large road, you just can't tell because it's a big, big site.
Yep.
And that's just emergency access.
That's emergency, yeah, because that, that exit or entry is a little scary.
It's disastrous.
Because it's very close to the railroad track.
It's pretty disastrous, I think it has, it's gonna have a gate there anyways for the abutter.
Yeah.
To go there, and that's why it was there. And they also, and they had a big stormwater problem there, and I believe the current owner went before this board, I mean, before.
The conservation.
Conservation, to deal with the stormwater problem on it, and that's already been.
So it will only be used for emergency purposes?
Correct, correct.
And then the green area, the landscaped area, is that open to the public, or is that just for curb appeal?
Corb appeal, it's private property?
Private property, so it's not open to the public?
It's more of green space and more to create a buffer.
Okay.
When you're coming from the street, and then it also, instead of having just a straight paved lot, at least beautification-wise, when you're coming down Eastern Ave, and it's, hopefully it could be a potential site when a user comes into the building, to develop a nice shell in there for them.
Okay, and then security-wise, will you have someone there twenty-four hours a day? Or is it just like security cameras that are there?
I don't believe, I don't believe there'll be twenty-four hours a day. From what I was told, it's gonna be gated.
Okay.
Gated, with a gated, you know, fence, which will be approved by the city if this was approved, with security cameras and lighting.
Okay.
You know, same as it's done now.
Go ahead, Joe.
With regards to location, is this the only one in Massachusetts?
Chelsea's, Chelsea's your only location.
Okay, is it going to be, well, is there any, there's nothing not in New England, so this will be the only location?
I think they want this to be their hub for multiple reasons. They already have a location here, they feel comfortable with the location, and the residence and so forth, plus the vicinity to the airport and water access and so forth. That makes it easier for transportation of vehicles, because the vehicle's gonna come right from East Boston, Chelsea, and they're gonna be driven less than a mile to there, which is why I think you see a lot of these park-and-ride type of locations. And originally, this was gonna be a portion of park-and-ride, but after talking to the city, that's something they didn't want to see here, so we did not do park-and-ride whatsoever.
And trucking is a big industry in the city anyways.
Correct.
Any questions before I open it up? Okay, this is still a public meeting, is there anyone here who wishes to speak on this? There being none, this, we will continue until the eleventh of July. You will come before the Planning Board on the twenty-seventh, as you know.
Thank you, Madam Chilwell, take us over to the board, have a good weekend.
Thank you, members.
Thank you very much. So we have a couple other, other business things, and I have some clarifications on these, John. So we, these are not, so, for example, three sixty-one Broadway, twenty twenty-two oh two, we're requesting an extension, extension on a special permit and variance. That is just something we on the board are voting on, it's not a public hearing.
Correct, none of these are, are public hearings at this point.
Okay, so, do we have, so, tell us what they, is there somebody here to speak on this, or John? Okay, come right on up, and there you go. You can't, you got, you've been here all this time, you gotta have a right to say something.
Thank you, and good evening, Phil Cohen from Boston Communities, I'll be very brief. You guys voted in favor of this project in April. We are building a mixed-income housing community on the Fourth at Broadway, in that corner. We needed your approval to start the funding process, and we've submitted one application to the state, so we're waiting for that funding process to conclude, and we're waiting, and we're asking to, to extend the variance for six months and.
Because you're waiting for the state.
Exactly, takes a while.
Do we have a motion to extend this special permit and variance?
Well, the special permit, you've got, you've got another year on the special permit. Special permit runs for two years, it's the variance that is about, or has or about to expire.
Yes, sir.
And you can only grant one six-month experience, uh, extension.
variance, on the variance?
On the variance.
Okay, you okay with that?
I've heard that's the rule, I'd rather it not be, but.
You got no choice.
That's state law.
Understood.
So tell the state to move its book. So, okay, do we have a motion to extend the variance on this for six months? Joe, second, Arthur, all in favor? Thank you for waiting and being so patient, I should have taken this earlier. Okay, I have another question, so, one fifty-one William Street, we're being asked to determine if this is a major or a minor modification, but this has not yet been advertised, so, this is again, it's a procedural question. If we determine this is major, then they have to re-advertise and come back.
Correct.
Okay, who's anybody here to speak on this? Okay, so basically what, as I, John, please fill us in, what this is being proposed?
So the board approved the construction of thirty units, all affordable at various levels. The developer has tried to market it as such, okay, financing, and he says he's unable to do so. He is now asking for twenty units to be affordable and tend to be market rate.
I think that's major. Does anybody, does anybody agree that this is a major modification?
I agree.
Is there, is there a motion to say that this is a major modification, which means we would have to rehear it?
So before were ten?
Before they were thirty, it was thirty units were affordable, now they want to go twenty affordable and ten market rate.
Okay.
And I, in my opinion, we granted things based on the fact that they had thirty affordable units. I would like to consider what they're, I'm not saying that I'm against it, I just would like to see what they're, they're proposing, what changes, or whether or not that twenty-ten split would have changed, you know, we might want more things, we might require more from them, there might be additional restrictions that get placed on their request. So that's why I think it's major.
And there was some concern of the residents when this went through both boards.
So do we, do we have a, do people think it's major or minor?
Major.
Okay, do we have a motion that it's a major? Second, all in favor? Okay, so we advertise that. Now, the next one is a slightly different thing, because this is twenty twenty-three thirteen, because this one has been advertised, is that correct? So we can, if we are so inclined, vote on this today, we need not, but we can. So if we, if we determine that this is major, then we can discuss it today. If we discuss, if we decide it's not major, it's moot. So again, why don't you, and could you introduce yourself for the record, please, and tell us what you're proposing that's different from your earlier request?
Okay, hello, can you guys hear me?
If you talk into the microphone, we will, there you go.
Okay, my name's Nicole Dunn, I live at thirty-four Hillside Ave. I am requesting a modification for thirty Hillside Ave, which I am a direct abutter at. The previous project, which was owned by a different person and proposed at a different time, was approved for a single-family, a large single-family home, a three-story home, and I am actually requesting to downsize it, structure-wise, to a single-story structure, which is existing. So the existing footprint that is on-site now is exactly what's gonna stay. The only thing we're gonna be adding is a small deck in the back as a second means of egress, and we're gonna be converting it from a six-bay garage to a two-family home with two garages. to a two-family home with two garage parking spots in it.
So do we consider that major or minor, people? I consider, in my opinion, that's major.
So if they, if they adding or they, uh, reconstruction, the, uh, do we need plans for that?
No, and John has, that's what, so. So I mean, I think if we, if we determine it's major, which is the first vote we have to make, if we determine it's major, if we do that, we can, because it's been advertised, we can proceed with this for, with Ms. Dunn right now. So, but, but John, I would want to know what we're required, what, if we're proceeding, what is required of this? That, you know, what variances and/or special permits would be. So first of all, first thing, do we have a recommend, do we believe it's major or minor? Number one.
Major. Major.
Do we have a motion to consider this a major modification? Made by Joe, seconded by Arthur, all, they said yes. Okay. So that's, that's one. It's a major modification. So now we have to rehear this.
Yeah.
It's been advertised, you know, it, it's, and now, John, is this a special permit kind of thing we're looking at? And will it have to go back to Planning Board?
I'll be honest with you, I have not reviewed it.
So can we, can we just continue it then?
You can.
But we're going to, we're going to continue this to July, to the July meeting, okay? July eleventh.
Because the board, I have to tell the board what new variances or special permits you would need, or what fewer ones you would need from the previous one. I just haven't had a chance to review it.
Because we, we don't know what we're approving.
Okay, because I have on the plans, the, um, proposed and the existing. So I don't know if we want to pull those up.
Yeah, but you propose, that's, you have the proposed physical stuff. That, John then has to figure out how that translates to permits and, and variances, so.
Um, so do I have to go to planning?
Uh, no, you don't have, no, no, you don't have to do it. It doesn't have to be advertised. You just have to show up here on the eleventh.
Okay.
Yeah, you don't have to go back to planning, because this is, this is not a site plan issue. This is just a zoning issue, so it'll be just before the board in July.
So you come back on July eleventh.
Okay.
And then we'll know the information, we'll be able to, because we don't know what we're approving.
Okay.
So, you know, we don't know, geez, we don't want to say, oh, yeah, we're giving you approval for a yard, a front yard setback, when you don't need a front yard setback.
Yeah.
But we don't, but more importantly, we don't want to not give you approval for a front yard setback, if you need it, because then you have to come back here again.
Okay.
So that, we're trying to avoid, even though it sounds like you have to come back next month, it's a pain. It'd be worse pain if we gave you something that, if we missed giving you something you needed.
Yeah.
And then you couldn't do it.
Okay.
I wouldn't be able to write up a decision not knowing what variances and special permits you need.
Okay.
That's the only, that's the only, so, so, you know, we're ready to hear it. We have, we have the new plans, based on the plans that you submitted. John will come up with that recommendation, and we will be able to decide next, in July.
Okay.
Okay?
I just hope I'm not last.
You wouldn't be last now, but, but you know something, John, remind me, if she's, if, if this ends up being last, we'll bring you up close quicker, okay?
I appreciate it. Thank you.
I can't promise you, I promise you, you won't be last, but I can't promise you'll be up front.
That's okay, as long as I'm not dead last. Okay, good, good.
Did, nope, does that, do we have a motion? Ooh, a motion to adjourn? Arthur? Oh, everybody's happy. All in favor. Thanks, Ricky. Good night.